Please come to order. Do you hear me? Okay, here we go. Okay, please come to order. Nantucket's 2018 Annual Town Meeting is now in session. I'd ask you to all rise as the Girl Scouts will now present the colors. Bobby Planzer will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible). One nation, under God, indivisible. Justice.
Please join us now in singing the National Anthem. Say, can you see by the dawn's early light? I'm so proud of the green air and twilight's last sea. Who's watch has sent my songs through the misty sky? For the hand of the deep watch will spread these green. And the rock is perfect, the monsters seem in there. A true to the night that our light was still there. Oh, say the fast stars candle and the red flame. For the hand of the free and the home of the brave. The Girl Scouts will now post the colors. Thank you. That's pretty good on just a couple minutes preparation. So, please remain standing because it's now my distinct pleasure to introduce the Reverend Dr. Ruth Small, President of the Nantucket Interfaith Council and Associate Minister for the First Congregational Church. She will give the invocation.
Let us pray. God of all creation, we thank you that we have the freedom to gather here tonight in community. Awaken in each of us a deep respect for one another. Encourage us with the hope that we might work together for the common good. We pray, O God, that you would guide and direct our time together so that this meeting would be filled with wisdom and kindness. O Lord, with our freedom and blessing comes responsibility. Fifty years ago to the day, Martin Luther King Jr. delivered his final speech, and yet racism still rears its ugly head here on Nantucket. Our scientific research has come so far in protecting our children from diseases, and yet our youth are being felled by deadly opioids. And in a land of plenty, basic housing is far from stable, yet our ecosystems are fragile and natural resources are finite. In our deliberations tonight, give us ears to truly hear one another, minds to learn from our collective voices, and the courage to join the conversation. Loving God, in the midst of the work ahead, give us a spirit of gratefulness and joy that we are here tonight in community, working side by side with others who have chosen to live on this small patch of land out in the ocean. We are a diverse people from all backgrounds and walks of life who join together in celebrating the daily gifts of seashore and moors and the uniqueness of our cobblestone and scalloping lives. Instill in each of us a desire to work and live graciously together. And when we leave this place, help us, Lord, to be bold in taking daily action to make the world a safer and more loving place for all people. Amen.
Please remain standing for just one final moment. Thank you, Dr. I don't. Hello? Okay. I always need more volume than anyone else. I have a low voice. Thank you, Reverend Small. Please join me in observing a moment of silence in memory of those in our community who have passed away since our last annual town meeting. In particular, I want to mention Sylvia Howard, who was our Register of Probate and a member of longstanding at the Planning Board, as well as David Goodman, who was one of our microphone people here and without whom I probably would not be here. So, a moment for them. Thank you. You may be seated. Wow. Okay. Time for new glasses. So I'm going to read the Return of the Warrant pursuant to Chapter 39, Section 10 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth and the Warrant of January 24, 2018. I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Nantucket qualified to vote in town affairs to appear at the times and places and for the purposes within mentioned by posting said notification on January 26, 2018, at the Stop and Shop on Pleasant Street, the Town and County Building at 16 Broad Street, and upon the bulletin boards at the corner of Main and Federal Streets in Siasconset Square. Sworn to underpants and penalties of perjury, Catherine Flanagan Stover, Constable. So I think those are all our formalities. Thank you all for coming. Really appreciate all your time and energy, and your participation tonight is extremely important. I want you to ju— I just want to remind you that over the course of this meeting, that you as the voters are the people who are really in control of the process. I will attempt to facilitate it, but the tenor of the debate, the length of the debate, and how the questions go, that's all in your hands, so please be mindful of that. I hope that you all have a copy of Nantucket Town Meeting: Traditions and Procedures. It was out on the front table. It's this blue handout. It hasn't changed from last year. This is a kind of supplement to Town Meeting Time. Town Meeting Time is the handbook of parliamentary law that's done specifically for town meeting and under the Charter is what we operate under here, as opposed to—we don't operate under strict Roberts rules. We operate under Town Meeting Time under the Charter. But we have some, I'd say, uniquely Nantucket traditions that are contained in Nantucket Traditions and Procedures. This was originally written by Mark Arnold, who was my predecessor, and we've updated it over the years to reflect changes in law as they came about. I'd ask, as we have done in the past, that you adopt this as supplementary rules of the meeting and ask for your unanimous consent to do that. Thank you very much. You should all also have a copy of the warrant and hopefully also— —warrant, town report. Most important is the warrant. We don't have tons of copies of these, so in the event that we have to come back here an additional night, ha-ha-ha, please keep your warrant and bring it back with you because we do not have other copies. So, for those of you who are new to town meeting, I just want to run through just a couple of basic rules. The finance— well, we have a practice of making all of our motions will be positive motions. What that means is that anything that's put before you tonight, when you vote, a yes vote will be adopting the motion and a no vote will be defeating the motion. Very, very rarely will we have a negative motion where that's the opposite. I do everything I can to avoid it. So what that means is that if you are here and you're interested in an article that has a not-to-adopt motion or something similar from either the Finance Committee or the Planning Board, and you want to bring debate forward on that particular article, it's incumbent upon you to bring forward a positive motion. If you're in that situation, please feel free to come down and speak to Town Council or to me if you have time. A lot of people have contacted me before the meeting and will work to help you get a positive motion together so that we're in shape when your article comes up. We do have this procedure of calling articles. What that means is I'll run through all the articles from 1 to 90. If you're interested in bringing forth debate, you can call it out. If you agree with the Planning Board or Finance Committee recommendation, then you don't need to call the article. All the articles that are not called will be voted in accordance with their recommendation. You don't have to be a town official or anyone can call an article and bring something forward. I am in a position where I'm able to declare two-thirds votes. We do not have to do a hand count in all cases with two-thirds vote. However, unless it's crystal clear, we will be doing hand counts. And if at any point you feel that I've called something as a two-thirds vote and it wasn't, feel free to call it out and ask for a hand count. Please wait to be recognized. Identify yourself for the record. All amendments, if possible, should be in writing. Address any questions or remarks. They should come through the chair, which means they should be directed to me. We want to avoid a situation where people in the audience are going back and forth between themselves. Please limit your remarks to the subject under discussion. If at any point you're confused about procedure, what you're supposed to do is stand up and say, "I rise to a point of order," or you can just yell out "point of order," and we can stop and take a minute to just make sure everyone understands where we are. Occasionally, we get lost and we forget to vote on amendment or something, so it's sometimes helpful if someone brings forward a point of order. Most importantly, please avoid any sort of personal attacks. If you find yourself about to say someone's name or direct something directly to a person, that probably means that you're about to go outside the bounds, so please try not to do that. And also, please don't applaud or otherwise hoot and holler. It just slows things down and is, in fact, rather irritating. If you are employed by someone to be here—I mean, obviously, if you're a department head, you don't have to do this because we know that you've been paid to come here to speak. But if you have been paid by your employer or by anyone else—lawyers are usually the most suspect class in this category—you are required under the bylaw to disclose the fact that you've been hired to come to the meeting and represent someone. With that, I would like to introduce the people who you see in front of you. They're the people who have done most of the really hard work in bringing forward all of these articles for your attention, starting from my right, your left. Jason Bridges, Matt Fee, who's Vice Chair of the Select Board, Rita Higgins, James Kelly, Chair of the Select Board, Don Hill-Holgate, Libby Gibson, Town Manager, John Giorgio, Town Council, Catherine Flanagan-Stover, our Town Clerk, Nancy Holmes, Assistant Town Clerk, Bobby Planzer, our official bell ringer. He also tells me he's an actor, a comedian, and he is, of course, my favorite eighth-grade student. And then the Finance Committee. The Chair, David Worth, Vice Chair Stephen Mori, Joe Gross, Chris Klowacki, Denise Cronow, Peter McKeckern, Joanna Roach, Henry Sanford, Cliff Williams. And then finally, way to your right, the Planning Board, Linda Williams, Chair, Nat Lowell, John Trudell, David Callahan, and Vice Chair Barry Rector. So now I'm going to read into the record just some last-minute changes to the Finance Committee and Planning Board recommendations. These are matters that have come up before the board either for a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's a typo, sometimes it's new information. They've met, they've voted, and their motion has changed. And when we get to the vote, the motion that you'll be voting on will contain these amendments that I'm going to read into the record now. And I will try to remember to tell you that when we get there. So the first one is Article 10. Okay. Way at the bottom, we're adding in— Yeah. Well, I can't read it if you've got to go down a little bit, the other way. There you go. "Authorized the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 1 of the General Laws or any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes of the town, provided that the amount of such borrowing shall be reduced by the amount of any insurance proceeds, grants, or aid received for the project prior to borrowing. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such cost by a like amount." That's under the funding source. The Department is—you have to go the other way. The Marine Department. The item is costs associated with the repair of the town pier, and the amount is $400,000. That changes the total to $7,871,552. At the end of that first paragraph, we're going to add, "And that $400,000 shall be borrowed pursuant to Chapter 44 of the General Laws or any other enabling authority." And then at the bottom, all of these sources totaling $7,871,552. Okay. The next one is 13. The second item down, Airport Fuel Revolving Fund. This is on page 25 of the warrant. We're going to strike the second one. Airport Fuel Revolving Fund, Airport Capital Project, Seasonal Hold Room, $630,000. Article 34. There was a case that was decided that makes this following change necessary in the motion on Article 34. Now, let me tell you. It's going to be at the bottom of page 42 where we're adding. It's a pretty long motion. The motion itself starts on page 39. So after the—at the very end of the motion on page 42, we're going to add a new provided paragraph that says this. "Provided further that the town shall not enter into any grant agreements or disburse any grant funds for the following three projects. South Church Preservation Fund, Restoration of Historic Glass and Windows; St. Paul's Church, Restoration of Bell Tower; and Two-Center Street Restoration Project, Inc., Fabricate, Paint, and Install Doors in Sanctuary, until the Community Preservation Committee makes a determination that said grants are eligible for funding under the standards established in the decision issued by the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court in Kaplan versus Town of Acton issued on March 9, 2018." Forty-three. The Planning Board's motion is being stricken. I'll tell you what page that's on. It's on page 49. The Planning Board's motion is being stricken and replaced with the following motion. Moved to take no action. Article 48. Starts on page 60. So in one, D, "exceptions for ground cover." One, we're adding, "Except in the Village Height Overlay District, VHOD, the Planning Board, etc." So we're accepting out the Village Height Overlay District, VHOD. Article 72. Which starts on page 100. The motion starts on page 100, continues to page 101. Down in the chart, third from the bottom. We're changing parcel or lots 222 to 223. And that—that is it. Okay. So, now we're going to call the articles. So again, you know, pay attention to the recommendations of the Finance Committee and the Planning Board. If you agree with those recommendations, you don't need to call the article. It will be adopted in accordance with the recommendation or motion. If however you disagree, then please call the article. It's better to be safe than sorry once I go through this. We're going to vote on all the uncalled articles, and then there will be no going back. So remember, you don't—you can be anybody. You don't have to be a town official or a sponsor. If, after you call the article—you called it because there was something you weren't clear about, or you had a question you think someone might be able to clear up, please let us know and we'll try to get an answer for you. If you get your question answered, you can withdraw the call of the article. I will then give anyone who happens to be here who wants to step into your shoes the opportunity to go into your place. Otherwise, we'll vote all those—on all those articles as a group at the end. Okay. Any questions before we start? Yes, Ms. Goss.
I'm sorry. On Article 47, and I don't know what page that's on right off the top of my head, but—
Page 59.
Thank you.
There's an "and"?
That probably shouldn't be there. "By placing property at MAP 67, parcel 471, currently located in the current country overlay district and in the town overlay district."
"By placing the following properties currently located in the town overlay district in the country overlay district."
I've got an "and" in there.
Huh. You do?
Yes, ma'am. Currently located—
Oh, an "and," I see, in the first one. That "and," right, that "and" should not be there.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams, can we have your Board's consent to strike that "and"? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Article 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Is that you, Mr. Reinamo? Okay. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Fifteen? Number 15, did you say? And can I have your name? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Skoken. 16, 17, 16. Minnesota. 17. Minnesota. 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23. 21, Ms. Skoken. 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32. Sounds like a gentle rain. 33, 34, 35. Mr. Dickler? Yes. Okay. 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47. 47? Oh, Ms. Goss, 47, okay. 48. Mr. Collier. 49, 50, 51, 52, 51? Is that—Mr. Lang is 51. And then, I think I heard someone, I'm 52. Oh, Ms. Fitzgibbon. 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58. 58? Can I have your name? Okay. 58, Ms. Myers. 59, Mr. Humphrey. Okay, I think so. 60, 61, 62, Teresa Williams. 63. Mr. Reinamo. 64 as well. Okay. 65, 66, 67. Ms. Murphy. 68, 69, 70, 71, 72. Yes? 72, Mr. Barada. Barada, I can't do it right. 73. 74, 75, 76. 77, Ms. Longacre. 78. 79. 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, and 90. Okay. So once more, a little faster, but with definite feeling. If I miss something, please call it out. So from 1 to 9, none of the articles are called. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, Mr. Reinamo. 11, 12, 13, and 14, not called. 15, Ms. Skoken. 16, Ms. Zota. 17, Ms. Zota. Not called. 18, 19, 20. 21, Ms. Skoken. Not called. A whole string here, these are not called. So if you want to hear them, this is your time. 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34. 35, Mr. Dickler. Not called. 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43. Not called. 44, 45, 46. 47, Ms. Goss. 48, Mr. Collier. Not called. 49 and 50. 51, Mr. Lang. 52, Ms. Fitzgibbon. Not called. 53, 54, 55, 56, 57. 58 called by Ms. Myers. 59, Mr. Humphrey. Not called. 60, 61. 62, Teresa Williams. 63, 64, Mr. Reinamo. Not called. 65, 66. Oh, 66. Ellen Ray. 67, Ms. Murphy. Not called. 68, 69, 70, 71. 72 and 73, Mr. Barada. Not called. 74, 75. 76 called by Mr. Barada. 77, Ms. Longacre. 78, 79. Mr. Barada, not called. 80, 81, and 82, Mr. Barada. And then not called. 83, 84, 85, 86. Yeah? 85 and 86. Now, those have negative recommendations. You don't want those, do you? I didn't think so. Okay. So 85 and 86 are not called. 87, 88, 89, and 90. Okay. So here's what we're going to discuss. We're going to discuss, start with number 10. Now, Mr. Reinamo has an amendment to Article 10. I have a conflict on that amendment. So my alternate moderator is going to step in for the amendment. Lisa Saperstein. Then we'll go to 15, 16, 17, 21, 35, 47, 48, 51, 52. On Article 52, the affected landowner is here. He's not a voter, but he's sitting up front under the watchful eye of the town clerk and he will be allowed to speak because this does affect his property directly. Let's see. From 52, we'll go to 58. Who does? On 58, Ms. Myers, we do need a positive motion on 58. So I would ask that you see Town Council. As you'll see, the Finance Committee comment is the town meeting doesn't have the authority to waive privilege fees. So we're going to have to come up with some sort of motion for you to make on that. 59, I have been given a motion on 59. Then we'll go to 62. We have a motion on 62. 63 and 64, Mr. Reinamo has given us motions. I do have a conflict on those two articles and will be recusing myself and Mr. Saperstein will handle those two. I do want to mention that in the audience are two representatives of the group that were awarded the RFP. They are here to answer questions as part of that, those two articles. Mark Hess from Holkeen Development and George Williams from the Building Company. Then we'll go to 66. Then 67, we have a motion on that, so that's good. 72, 73, 76, 77, 78, 79, 81, 82. And that will, that's it. So just that one motion, Mr. Georgia, that we'll need for Mrs. Myers. So now we're going to vote on all the uncalled articles in the following motion. Move that the following articles be voted as recommended and/or amended by the Finance Committee or as recommended and/or amended by the Planning Board as printed in the Finance Committee report with technical amendments brought forward during the course of the meeting. These are the articles and these will, as I said at the beginning, incorporate the technical amendments that we went through at the beginning. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, 18, 19, 20, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47. Recognize Mr. Worth, Chairman of the Finance Committee, for the purpose of making that motion. Is that your motion, Mr. Worth? Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Now, because this motion includes Article 2, unpaid bills, that article requires a four-fifths vote. So I'll just tell you, so we know it upfront. Unless this vote is unanimous, we're going to have to do a hand count. So. A point of order, Ms., yes?
I'm phrasing this as carefully as I can. I have not heard any assertions that we have a quorum.
There is no quorum for an annual town meeting, thank you. We do have a quorum requirement for a special town meeting, but it would be enough for me and Mr. Gallagher here to hold an annual. And sometimes it almost feels like we are. But not tonight, because there are lots of you here tonight. So on the motion, which is this motion that I read, a yes vote will adopt all of those articles in accordance with their recommendations as brought forward in the warrant and as amended by the technical amendments written at the beginning of the meeting. A no vote will defeat that motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. That motion is adopted unanimously. Thank you. So, moving right along to Article 10. The Finance Committee motion starts at the top of page 11, continues onto page 12, onto page 13, 14, 15, and 16. It does contain the additional funding for the Marine Department, costs associated with the town peer of $400,000, changing the overall total of the article to $7,871,552. Recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making that motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Before I go to Mr. Saperstein and Mr. Reinamo's amendment, is there anyone who wants to be heard just on the main motion of the Finance Committee? Okay. Oh. You have to go get sworn in.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Right, if one of the tellers would provide Mr. Reinamo with a microphone. And as that's happening, given my surname, Mr. Reinamo, would you make sure I'm pronouncing it correctly? I'm pronouncing your name correctly? Just keep speaking and the monitors will make sure it works. Reinamo. Okay, thank you. We, we, we need a microphone for, we need for it to go live, please.
How about now?
I think we've got it now, thank you.
My proposed amendment to this is to remove the $1,314,800 for the construction and planning of Wait Drive.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there a second for that? And if there is, may we have that person's name, please? I do not see, is somebody rising for a second? Yes, over there, now wait for the microphone, please.
James Cabral.
Right, thank you. That, that's made and seconded. So let me explain to the people who are looking at the screen. If this passes, the entire section marked DPW Transportation, Costs Associated with Design Engineering Permitting and Construction Related to Six Fairgrounds Area Improvements, including, I guess it's Wait Drive, would all be removed, including the paragraph on transfer and of course, the $1,314,800. The tradition in town meeting is for the proponent to have five minutes to address us. Up to five minutes, you don't have to take it all.
Thank you, I'll try to be brief. For those of you unfamiliar, Wait Drive is the proposed road that is a left-hand turn off of Tacoma. Would be the first left-hand turn off Tacoma. And its, its purpose is largely a driveway for the proposed development at Six Fairgrounds Road, the Tacoma Green project. It is not a throughway. It would not have any public purpose that I could see other than to access these properties. So it is necessary for the developers of, of this proposed project to have this made into a public way when it is just essentially their own, their own driveway. As I'm sure many of you know already, the town has already agreed to lease them this land, which is assessed at millions of dollars. We're leasing it to them for $1 a year for 99 years. And then on top of that, they would like the town, the taxpayers, to foot the bill for this driveway. In addition to the access, the development is also short significantly on their required parking. So the town is also footing the bill for parking on this street, building the parking that is, is cited as necessary for this development because approximately 30% of their statutory required parking was waived. I think that this is a bad deal for Nantucket. I know that, that there are lots of, lots of different opinions out there on, on affordable housing and how we combat it and how we address it. And I, I think, you know, I'll probably get into those later for this article. Regardless of, of where you stand on that, this is a bad deal for Nantucket. We're, we're giving them the land. We're steamrolling, you know, a lot of, a lot of barriers to make sure that they get it for free for a long time. They're going to profit immensely on it. And, and now they want the taxpayers to build them and pay for what is essentially their driveway and their parking lot. So I would, I would ask you to consider this amendment. I think that the town certainly has a better use of over $1.3 million than to further line the pockets of this off-island for-profit development corporation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask if our Town Council or Town Manager wishes to speak. And I see our Select Board Chair with a hand.
Wait Drive is a roadway that is necessary to service the whole back of the property that we purchased as a town in 2004. This road connects through to the municipal lot and will carry on to Old South Road, providing a connection. There is on-street parking proposed for the entire neighborhood. The proposal is it for, is for it to not be overnight parking. This neighborhood includes homes being, that are being built by Habitat for Humanity and Housing Nantucket. And there will be other future uses as well. And it also accesses the rear of our public safety facility. Beyond that, we have already obligated ourselves to the developer of Tacoma Green and signed a land development agreement that obligates the town to do the improvements to the. that obligates the town to do the improvements to this road. This is something that we've already voted on numerous times. And it's an important thing to develop out the rest of this property that we purchased in 2004. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to open conversation. I see a hand here.
This time. Maria Zodo, three down, a speech road. I just have a question. Just the $400,000 from the Affordable Trust Fund come out of the trust fund? And is that money being used to put in the road and not for an actual building of affordable housing?
I'm going to give you my interpretation and then I'm going to ask somebody down in front whether or not I'm correct. There is a move for $400,000 from the... sorry, $300,000 from the town to the Affordable Trust Fund and $400,000 from the Community Preservation Committee grant. Those are in separate motions. Neither of those, it's my understanding, have anything to do with this action.
I'm afraid that doesn't answer my question. I just don't understand where the transfer of the $400,000 comes from.
Okay. If you're talking about the Marine grant, that's in the main motion and not in the amendment.
Transfer $400,000 from the Affordable Trust Housing Trust Fund?
And my apology, I should have read it more closely.
Okay.
Then we're going to have to ask somebody down below to answer that.
A couple of years ago, the Board of Selectmen put $1 million into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And part of that was always intended to go towards improvements of this road for affordable housing purposes.
Thank you. And we have a teller waving at me way in the back.
My name's Brian Sullivan. I am the chairperson of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We, the board... My board voted unanimously to transfer this money to help support this project, to move the construction of the road forward. This project's going to support 64 affordable housing units on Nantucket. This was the mind of this meeting in 2004 when we purchased the property. As we have continued to develop it with the police station, there are future plans, fire station, this road will service, as the chairwoman mentioned, Habitat for Humanity and other affordable housing projects on the island which we so desperately need. This has been a mindset of this community since the '80s to develop. And here we are at the point where we're ready to break ground and get it done. Let's not slow the process down and keep the momentum forward in getting people in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for any other hands. If I don't see one, we're going to have a vote. Right, we're ready to vote. Please remember... no, there is another one back there. Thank you. Just keep talking.
Paul Belanger?
Here we go.
Is the town going to be required to plow, maintain this road for extended period of time? Or has it become theirs? How's it work?
A reasonable question. Let me have somebody down below answer.
Yes, it will be a town road and it will be maintained by the town and plowed.
Thank you. Our teller in the back is busy.
Yes, James Cabral. You know, I've been hollering at because of this, but I didn't know that this is going to be apartment buildings. Well, I voted for it. I voted to... and it was supposed to be a nice cottage kind of setting, not the six... and it's like Old South Road. Why are we paying for someone that's going to make millions of dollars, millions, off of us? Because somebody signed a rotten deal. Thank you.
Thank you. And we now have somebody up forward. I see you.
Okay, it's on. Hi, my name is Brooke Moore and I am on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I started... I volunteered for this because I started coming here in the '80s when the headlines were there's not enough housing. And there's still not enough housing. And this town has worked hard to get this, bring this project forward. And I would really hate to see it stopped. Never mind that we're in a contract with the developer. It's gone through all of the open meetings and the process. There's been incredible input from all the boards and town committees on this project. And the bottom line is that financially, in order to have subsidized lower rent prices, the developer needs the public support. This is a public-private partnership that's going to make 64 units of housing available to people who desperately need it. And I encourage you to oppose this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. And in the back, teller groomer.
Julie Rynemo. I just was looking for a clarification from Ms. Holgate if I could. I think you said we need this for... to access the property at Six Fairgrounds that the town has purchased. There's currently two driveways on Fairgrounds Road and there's another road go off of Old South Road. So as I see it, there's already three access roads that could be used instead of spending another million dollars.
A response?
This provides another access through to lots that have been created along it, to the rear of the public safety facility. And it provides another connection for traffic flow through to Old South. That's what I meant by that.
On a second response. One minute, please.
The rear of the property right now is being used as a parking lot for buses and boat trailers and trucks and all kinds of stuff. And I drive a taxi. I've been able to access that lot from Old South Road with no problem.
I do understand the layout, but I will defer to somebody... we're talking about Number Six Fairgrounds Road, not Number Two. I recognize the Director of Planning.
Thank you.
I think you're on.
I am. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The road in question is a... I just want to make it clear. It's a public road. It was laid out by the county commissioners in an action. It's not, as it's described, as a driveway. It's essentially parallel to Amelia Drive in the back and it provides access to other properties owned by the town. It provides the frontage on land on both the right and left side. And it does connect, as Ms. Hill Holgate said, to the parking lot, which then has further connections out to Old South Road and Fairgrounds.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a vote. Please remember, no, we have a hand... Mr. Rynemo, one minute this time, please.
Thank you. Just to wrap things up, I just wanted to address some things that have been mentioned. This property was purchased in 2004. A lot has changed since 2004. Most notably, a proliferation of high-density housing that's being built that we haven't realized the impacts for yet. So while this may have seemed like a great idea in 2004, a lot has been done in the meantime. And I also would encourage the people in this room not to vote because we feel like we have to because of a vote we made years ago. If it wasn't necessary for democracy to approve this 1.3 million right now, we wouldn't be voting on it. It is definitely our right to say, no, we don't want to spend that 1.3. So let's not worry about what other people have done before this. In terms of trying to fight this, we have tried to get the Board of Select people and the Planning Board to slow it. And they have sped it up at every opportunity. And this is our chance to bring some common sense.
And I thank you. We have a hand forward. And I'm looking. It looks like Mr. Drake.
Call the question.
Mr. Drake has suggested that we call the question. By the way, when we shut off debate, only a point of order. I apologize, but I recognize Mr. Drake. So the call for the question requires a supermajority. Two-thirds, I believe. It's not debatable. And so, all those in favor of closing debate? Yes?
Toby Brown. I saw Ms. Topham's name, hand risen quite a while and the gentleman with the microphone was waving and waving. I think, for this kind of money, I think she deserves to speak. Thank you.
The proposer of call the question? He told me that I should recognize Mrs. Topham. He didn't say that, actually.
Hello? Jeanette Topham, 29 Homick Pond Road. My concern is that this is going to go into Old South Road. Has anybody been traveling on Old South Road? That you cannot get through... I go for breakfast on Thursday mornings in the summer and there are 120 cars coming and the others going in the other direction. I think we really need to consider our traffic as much as the money and see where this is all going. And thank you, Mr. Drake, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And this time, if I don't see any hands, I'm not sure that the call for the question is necessary. Let's have a vote. Remember, please, a positive vote will delete the number and the line from Article 10. A negative vote will retain it and leave it as it is. And in either case, my job will be done. We'll hand it over to the moderator. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay?
Nay.
The nays have it. That was too... that was too... that was too clear. But it's up to you if you think I...
No, it's your call.
No, I think that was very clear.
Okay. Thank you. So now we're on Article 10. What's your issue? You want a hand count? All right, so here's the deal. Mr. Saperstein made the call that there was no hand count required. However, if you really want a hand count, I think he will agree to do a hand count.
Of course.
Of course. We always do a hand count when people want a hand count.
I think I better...
Happy hand count.
The way this works is we have tellers distributed through the auditorium. And I will ask for your votes in just a second. And when I ask, raise your hand appropriately until the teller nods at you that the count has been made, at which point you may rest. So all those in favor of deleting the item, please raise your hand. I hear you. Point of order? Microphone, please.
My name is Jasper Young. I'm just a little confused about what a yes vote means and what a no vote means at this point in the meeting.
Okay. It's on the amendment and a positive vote deletes the item. A negative vote on the amendment retains the item. Am I clear? Okay, look. The amendment was to remove the item, DPW Transportation, Costs Associated with Building Wait Drive, $1.3 million. The amendment, that's what we're voting on, would delete that if there was a positive vote. The amendment would fail and the item would be retained if there is an overwhelming negative vote. Now am I clear? Vote yes if you want to remove the item. Vote no if you want it retained. Now am I clear? All right. All those in favor of the amendment to delete this item, please raise your hand. For the benefit of those who are new, the tellers will come forward with their counts and the town clerk will add them up. And when they've all reported, I will then call for the next vote. As soon as the tellers get back into position. All right. The next vote, it would be a nay vote. All those who wish to say nay, just a second. In doing so, the amendment would fail if the nays are greater than the ayes and the item would be retained. All those opposed, please say nay. Or raise your hand, nay. Thank you.
Don't forget the cameraman.
As the tellers come forward, let me remind everybody that this is a simple majority vote. And I will report, the yes votes were 206, and the no votes were 298. The amendment fails, and my job is done. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Saperstein. So we're back on Article 10, as printed in the warrant, with the technical amendment read into the record at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anything further on Article 10? Seeing no, we'll go right to a vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor of the main motion on Article 10, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Article 15. I do want to say, as just a procedural point, if at any point during the meeting you question the decision of the chair, the way to bring that to the chair's attention is to get up with a point of, yell out point of order. It requires seven people, so you and six people, like-minded people, have to stand up and ask for a question on the ruling. We'd prefer that it be done that way. It's just very difficult when there's kind of a mob of people yelling kind of willy-nilly from the back of the room. So Article 15. On page 26 of the warrant, the motion is as printed in the warrant. I'd ask for your unanimous consent to waive the reading of that motion. Thank you. And I will recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making the motion.
This is the motion of the Finance Committee, Madam Moderator.
On Article 15. The motion of the Finance Committee on Article 15. Just yell out, "So moved."
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. This was called by Mrs. Goken up in the back, and I don't know whether anyone from the town wants to talk about it first. No. Seeing no, we can always come to you once we get Ms. Goken's question out of the way.
I live on Old South Road, and I'm thrilled that there's going to be improvements to Old South Road. Two minutes ago, we voted to build a road parallel to Amelia Drive, less than 150 feet away. I'm not sure in the $14 million if that includes the taking and improvements of Amelia Drive. And I don't know if anyone can answer that quickly, but I've said it before at the planning meetings, if we have Amelia Drive and we take it, which we've talked about for years, and we now have Wait Drive 150 feet away, my sense is that we don't have to improve Amelia Drive. We have two parallel roads running side by side. If they're one-way roads, Amelia from Old South Road to Tacoma, and Wait Drive one-way from Tacoma to Old South Road, it may be less than whatever is put aside to take Amelia Road and improve it. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Mr. Force?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I'm going to just stick to the question about the taking, so the $14 million does not include the cost of taking. The Planning Board has an account from the developer of the market at the corner to complete that taking with separate funding. So it will become a public road. That matter will be brought before the county commissioners, and in terms of one-way, two-way, I have to leave that decision to a future discussion and their wisdom on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on Article 15? Okay. Oh, Ms. Oda?
This is a large amount of money. Do we have a diagram of exactly what we're paying $14 million for? Doubling the size of the road, jersey barriers, turnouts? Just curious.
Mr. Burns?
Madam Moderator, if the vissemos have the graphic, there we go.
Do you have the... There you go.
I'm happy to answer any questions about any one of these numbered areas. Really quick, because I know it's a, we all want to get out of here in one night. This includes the reconstruction of the Milestone Rotary, a roundabout, which is partially, some of the design funds have already been approved for fairgrounds at Old South Road. The areas three, four, eight, and nine are essentially putting a bike path on the south side of Old South Road. It also includes landscape medians. There's no added travel lanes. There's going to be a landscape median in the middle of the Old South Road to facilitate two-point left-hand turns, so it's a little bit easier to get out of the driveways from the businesses on the south side of Old South Road. There's also intersection improvements for Pulpus at Milestone Road, Nobodyr Farm Road and Milestone Road, and quite a bit, quite a few bus pull-offs, so that the NRTA bus can pull off out of the flow of traffic onto the side of the road and allow for better flow of traffic. So if there's anything specific about any one of these areas, I'm happy to go into that a little bit more, but just for the sake of time, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Up in the back?
Ms. Cabral. Why do the public, that Glackey's old property, that guy's putting a thousand cars at least by the time he's through on Old South Road? Why does the public always have to bail on them out or get stuck paying for it when we get no use of it? And 14 million, that's a lot of money. Where do they come up with the numbers? Thank you.
Yes. Please stand.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Millard, 3 Dianas Beach Road. This is just one-third. We're talking one-third of this project. This project goes all the way to Macy Lane and Nobodyr Farm Road. I'd like to ask the gentleman who just stood up, how wide is this going to be from bike path to side, side to side? How much is this going to be paved on one side and paved on the other in between, not counting the median strip? And how much is Richmond putting into this? They're creating quite a bit of the traffic as well.
Mr. Burns?
I think it was a question, I think you asked how wide is the road going to be? There's essentially an eight-foot, the path on the south side of the road, eight feet for bikes and pedestrians. On the north side of the road, there's an existing 10-foot wide bike path. And like I said earlier, there's single lane traffic. There's, for each direction of Old South Road, each lane of traffic, you know, 11 feet wide. So there's not an additional lane of traffic being provided. There's another question about the Richmond contributions to this area. The areas between, I'm going to rough it out, between nine and 10, that gap there, that road's being reconstructed by Richmond. So that's their contribution and the intersection, it's not numbered, it's between 10 and 11. The airport road intersection is being reconstructed by Richmond. So that was their contribution to this reconstruction of Old South Road.
Thank you. Ms. Goss?
Thank you, Vicki Goss, Blueberry Lane. I, how many of these, there's been a talk of rotaries and roundabouts on this road. Can you, can you point out, and then I'll continue my question?
You want me to count up the, which intersections are proposed for roundabout? Was that the question?
Yes, please.
Well, number one is a rotary, which would be rebuilt as a roundabout, a modern roundabout. Right now, it's kind of an odd configuration.
That's the existing rotary.
That's item number one, and that's...
Okay, let's not go back and forth. Let Mr. Burns answer, then we'll come back to you, Ms. Goss.
So intersection number one, that's a roundabout. Intersection number six, Pulpus intersection. The intersection number seven, the Nobodyr Farm Road and Milestone Road. And intersection number two, the Fairgrounds, Old South Road, which already has a portion of that design already funded.
So rotaries at seven, six, roundabouts rotaries, and two will be new. We already have the rotary at one, and a few blocks down the road, we have another roundabout, which causes all kinds of backup. It's not the road configuration. It's not. It's the traffic that's the problem. This island isn't designed, those two roads aren't designed for this amount of traffic. It, Fairgrounds Road already has that two-point left turn, which does some good, but not a great deal. It's the number of cars coming down, and all any new development is doing is adding more cars, adding rotaries when everybody's going left anyway. Everybody is heading into town. Not that many people are coming from those roads out to the east. Rotaries and roundabouts aren't going to fix any of the traffic, so I don't really see where $14 million is essential in, in the scheme of things, in the traffic improvement scheme of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes? No? Okay.
Jeanette Topham, 29 Homick Pond Road. I'm looking at this figure of $14 million. I would like to see that money going to our sewer improvement and other items that we need, and put this on a delay. We've had such a winter, I think that we really need to start thinking about improving our roads, our sewer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, way up in the back.
My first time speaking at town meeting. Galen Gardner, One Rainbow Zen. I'm curious to know if you're going to be taking property from the abutters to build this, and also, I'd like to know a little bit more about the grass medians and how those would affect the business owners on Old South Road.
Mr. Burns?
Well, this past summer, we did a conceptual planning exercise, but basically what's informing this article. And we, well, to answer the question about property impacts, there'll probably need to be temporary construction easements, but a lot of the work is being done within the layout of Old South Road. So we don't anticipate there being permanent acquisitions of property, but, you know, to build this project, you probably would need to, for grading purposes and just for, you know, fixing driveways and whatnot, need to have a temporary easement in some of these areas. So it's all within the road layout. Help me out if I missed another question that was in there.
I think you, I think you hit them. Okay, yes. Ms. McClure? Oh, wait a minute. Not, not to you. I'm going to Ms. McClure, and then I'll come back up to you.
I have a question. My name is Baye McClure, and my question is, we don't know the impact of the Richmond development on that road, and spending $14 million before we know what's going to happen seems to me a little to jump the gun. I think we ought to see what's going to, how it's going to be impacted, and then deal with how it should be, how it should be done, if it needs to be done then. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Gardner, did you have a follow-up question?
Yes, it was my first question, and that is, what, can I hear a little bit about the grass medians and how those are going to affect the business owners on Old South Road?
Mr. Burns, grass medians?
I can't really elaborate too much about the grass medians so much. I guess it's the question, what the look would be like and what kind of plants would go in the middle. I mean, really, the function of that landscape median, obviously aesthetics is extremely important along the corridor, you know, having nice trees and whatnot was very critical to not only traffic calming in the area, but, you know, this is the aesthetic appearance. I mean, Antucket is, you know, a nice destination. We want the appearance of the road layout to be something that people can be proud of. There are, you know, a function that's being provided by these landscape meetings, again, in order to make a left-hand turn out of the businesses along the south side of Old South Road, or even the north side on, for the section that's by the Richmond development. That's going to allow a two-point left-hand turn. Now, in order to avoid, you know, we don't do signalized intersections here. Traffic lights and traffic signals is just something, that is not an option. So roundabouts and these landscape medians to facilitate a two-point left turn, to make it a little bit easier to make a left-hand turn, that's, that's really the point of it. So I hope that addresses the question. I really can't go into detail about what the landscape would necessarily look like. I think that's a fun exercise, once we start flushing this out, and we have our public outreach meetings to kind of get input on that. You know, do you want to see cherry trees there? What do you want to see? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Up in the back?
Hi, Paul Valanger again. The contribution that developers could contribute to this project, what is the percentage of their contribution versus what we're contributing?
Mr. Force?
The value of the improvements in front of their property is $3 million. So it's $3 million of the 14 in the various other locations.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Stover, you had someone over there?
Hi, Victoria Gerben. I think you're going to need those landscaping improvements, because when people sit there for 10 or 15 minutes in their car, in the traffic, they're going to need something to look at. It's still a two-lane road. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you. Up, up there in the back?
Madam Moderator, Eve Messing, just adding to that, I don't quite have a visual on how this median is going to make a left-hand turn any easier. What does that have to do with whether or not a car is coming to let you take that left? How is a median going to facilitate making a left any easier than we do now, whether it's two-point, three-point, however many turns, degrees? That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Burns?
Thank you. And just to talk about the, you know, I didn't really want to get into a technical discussion about what level of service means and all this jargon that, you know, these, you know, us people that are in the business, the planners, the engineers, but we do have a level of service along, I don't, I don't think I'm exaggerating by saying the traffic along Old South Road backs up probably from the rotary to about Amelia Drive. I mean, that's, I mean, nobody's going to disagree with that, and I'm wrong. That's a super failure. Failure is, if you wait a minute. So this is super failure along this approach. These conceptual improvements, and again, we did a build-out analysis with the Richmond develop and assuming 1% growth rate over the next number of years, and, you know, the level of service that you're going to experience at these intersections, once it's built, it's, it gets into like the level of service B, the level of service A, instead of this super failure condition. So we were happy with the results, based on the scenarios and the simulations that we did with the intersection reconfigurations. It's, it's going to make getting through this corridor much, much easier with the pull-offs, with the roundabouts, with these, again, what a two-point left-hand turn is. You pull out into the road, you wait in that median area until the traffic going from left to right clears out, you find a gap, and then you can enter that gap, rather than dealing with two flows of traffic. rather than dealing with two flows of traffic. So you can basically attack one flow at a time. That's what the medians do. All of these reconfigurations collectively will bring this to like a level of service A or B, depending on which one of these intersections you look at. And that's very good, considering the weight that everybody has to experience right now.
Mr. Borchert?
Hello, Carl Borchert, 14 Burn Swamp Lane. I have an observation to make during this debate of this article. It's quite simple, actually. It has to do with the public safety facility years ago that was lost by 50 votes. And now, the fire department is going to cost us a lot more money because of that than the original price tag of the public safety facility. Now, it's significantly more because we waited. My point is, very simply, that we can spend $14 million right now on this and really improve Old South Road corridor and the main rotary. If we wait, it's going to cost a lot more. I can guarantee you that. It's going to cost 18 or 20 or 22 million if we put this off and put this off and put this off. Town officials have worked very hard on the Old South corridor study. Mr. Burns has worked very hard. And like I say, if we don't buy it now, we're going to have to buy it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there someone up there who hasn't spoken? Okay, Mistress.
Michael Fee, 12 Kelly Road.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Fee, and I'll come back down to your person, Mistress Stover.
Okay, sorry. Looking at this road, wouldn't it be feasible to have another road connecting to like Milestone Road to alleviate some of the traffic? Because you're still going down towards the rotary while you're still going down to Nobedear Road. Either way, you're going to get stuck in traffic eventually down at Milestone or down at the rotary again. If you could have a road go from Old South over to Milestone in between, you'll alleviate a lot of traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mistress Stover, you had someone? All right.
Hello, Campbell Sutton, 15 Appleton Road. So I just wanted to make a couple of observations. I think Vicky mentioned earlier the roundabout where the bank and the post office and Hooper Farm, which in the off-season is great. In the on-season, that thing now backs right up into Stop and Shop. It backs a good half-mile up Hooper Farm at least twice a day. So it hasn't, to her point, it hasn't alleviated the traffic movement as people try and turn in and out of businesses. Now, the median thing, my observation in Hyannis has been that where they place the medians from, when you like take the right to go from the boat to their major rotary, those medians seem to have really negatively impacted the businesses on those roads. The ability to turn in and out and to get to a business seems to be hampered, not enhanced. That's one. And then where they've also put the median -- and I don't know my roads very well, but maybe it's like around Finney Lane or something headed to six. EMS Sports just shut down because they can't -- if you wanted to get there, you had to go all the way down to a light, turn around, come around, go back the other way. Same with Mary Lou Coffee, the mobile station there. So I think right off, I'm not a big fan of the median. The width of the road, and then you have -- I mean, I can sort of see it already. Someone juts out because they think they're in America, and they're like zoom. And now, they're sitting in the middle of the road, or they might get right behind somebody else. And now, you've blocked traffic going through while they're still trying to make a left or a right or what have you. But those are just a couple of observations. One more. I know this did come up for public hearing, but I believe it came up at an hour that many working people are actually working and don't have the time, which is an issue across all of these public hearings, is they happen in the main at times when people are working. So it would appear like we don't actually have an opportunity to put input in because it's like, well, do you go make money or do you go put your input in? So of course, you wait for critical mass. But anyway, thanks.
Yes, up in the back?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Rich Ross, 11 A Newtown Road. My question, or actually, my proposal, is if they're asking us for 11 -- or sorry, $14 million, based on this one picture of what we're trying to set aside for road improvements, I think that they should give us a little bit more diagrams or something so we can actually see. Because as of right now, as a voter, you're asking me for my say-on $14 million based upon a diagram that has two, three, four, five, and six written on it without any actual delineation as to what that money will be going for and what it will look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, over here.
Oh, sorry. Carolyn Duran, Shampoo. I am curious, and I wish I was more informed, but there's one element about this we don't know about. With all of the proposed rotaries, is it absolute that they would each be employed? Or is it a sequence in which they would face the necessity for them? So that's one question. And then, the other component of the question is, if I look at six and seven at Pulpus Road and Milestone, I know they relate to the flow of Old South Road, but it seems to me that we need to see the execution of some of this and how it works. But I'm not a road engineer, so I don't know. But I know specifically on seven, we have problems there already because of the traffic lines, the yellow lines and the taring lanes. They're off. That may not be material. But if we're making studies based on accidents and flow in that particular place, those lines have been wrong for 10 years. So there's a lot of accidents that happen there. And the other thing that I want to comment on was safety because I think this whole thing is so necessary and the use of the bike paths, everything, all the safety. But I find that if I'm traveling around the rotaries when there's a lot of traffic, people are far less likely to look for a pedestrian crossing the street at a rotary because they just think, go, than at the places upon Old South Road where we actually have crosswalks. So I don't know if that's a question or a bunch of questions.
Okay. Yep, Mr. Lo.
Thank you. This is why town meeting can't be a public hearing. We had so many meetings about this, and no one shows up. So here we are. So I'm going to do the best I can to explain. That last speaker actually hit on a very important point. This is an authorization to borrow $14 million. Brian, will you say yes, nod? Authorization to borrow, right? Thank you. That's Brian Turbit, Finance Director. Thank you. This doesn't mean we're writing a check for $14 million and putting it in a coffee can for this, okay? So what the lady said was very good. We are going to slowly implement the most important improvements first. Now, I know maybe we haven't -- we've maybe forgotten the past on Old South Road, the stop signs. Remember the stop signs? Remember the traffic backed up to the regular rotary before we had the roundabout that works? Okay. We've had traffic long before we ever heard the name Richmond, okay, on Old South Road. Also, Boulevard is being improved as well. That may not -- I think about that. But that is going to help spread out the vehicles that are on Old South Road over time. The road that Mr. Fee mentioned? Mike, we agree with you. Never going to happen. We already tried. It's not going to happen what he said. It's a great idea, but we already went through the cycle for that. It's not going to happen. So unfortunately, that's just not an option. So to just answer the question about the $14 million and what we're doing, yes, we're doing the most important things first. Each project gets bid. Some of the funding that's already existing, as Andrew said earlier, is taken into each one of the projects, especially the one at Fairgrounds and Old South. Again, when the bids come in, like we did with the sewer, sometimes the bids are a lot less than what the estimates are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Harvey Young. I want to speak in favor of this article. I think we should appropriate these funds, and we should work on this area on the island. I grew up out on the Old South Road when it was nothing but pine trees, all the way to Surfside, all the way to Pulpus, all the way to wherever you could go. That was a long time ago. It's not a long time ago anymore. It's not like it used to be. This is a huge, busy area. This is an awesome thing that's been worked on for a long time. There's a lot of traffic there. There's a plan that's been in the works for many years. I think we should vote in favor of this, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm much heartened to hear that we have $3 million from the Richmond group. But could you please tell me, is it in the town's bank account? Thank you.
No? No, it is not. Okay, did someone move the question? Mr. Beal? Okay, so a motion to move the question will end debate. It does require a two-thirds vote. If you vote yes, you'll be voting yes?
James Cabral again. How about the people that have been waiting for 10, 15 minutes to speak? Someone yells, "Point of water," and they...
Okay, so let me explain how this works. So unfortunately, not everyone always gets to speak. That's part one. Part two is if people here want to hear more speaking, they will vote against the motion to move the question. That's why the motion to move the question requires a two-thirds vote. If the motion to move the question is adopted, that means at least two-thirds of the people in the room have heard enough and have made up their minds. And all the talking in the world isn't probably going to change that result. So if you feel like, Mr. Cabral, that you want the people who have had their hands up to speak and have their opportunity, then you should vote against the motion to move the question. If you have made up your mind, and you've heard enough, and you want to go right to a vote on Article 15, then you should vote in favor of the motion to move the question. So having recognized Mr. Beal, who's made that motion, I'm going to take a vote on the motion to move the question. It does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. I declare that a two-thirds vote is met on that article, on that motion to move the question. That means we'll go directly to a vote on the main motion on Article 15 as printed in the warrant. This does require a two-thirds vote to be adopted. A yes vote will adopt the Finance Committee motion as printed in the warrant. A no vote will defeat that motion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, I know you're going to want to hand count, so I will just do a hand count right from the get-go. So all those in favor of the motion on Article 15 as printed in the warrant, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised until the tellers have had an opportunity to count your vote. She says yes. I don't know who it is, though. Okay, hold on. Okay. Okay, so all those opposed to the motion on Article 15, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised till the tellers have counted your vote. Do you have your two-thirds count her up? Because you know that's always... Okay, on Article 15, yes, 405. No, 115. It's a total of 520. Two-thirds, 343. The motion on Article 15 is adopted. Okay. Article 16, on page 27 of the warrant. Finance Committee motion is as printed in the warrant. As for your unanimous consent to waive the reading, and I recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making the Finance Committee's motion.
So moved, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Does anyone from the town want to speak on this before I go to Ms. Zoda, who called this article? Seeing none? Yes? Oh, sorry, Mr. McNeil.
Can I say something quickly?
Go ahead.
Rob McNeil is our new DPW director, and by new, I mean he's been here one year today.[610.23][610.23](Applause).
Thank you. This article was specifically put together to address some of the identified deficiencies with the DPW facility, including undersized and outdated facilities, drainage improvements including nutrient removal adjacent to Long Pond, lack of efficient centralized use of space, buildings that have exceeded their useful life, plumbing, building, and mechanical code issues within our workspaces. The primary focus for this improvement project is to place our high-valued equipment indoors. The purpose of the article is to proceed with professional services for design, permitting, engineering, and other related professional services with other costs incidental to developing plans for eventual construction of improvements to our facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oda?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To the best of my knowledge, these are the two town departments that haven't come to us for capital expenses, and they're also two town departments that do their job in a top-shelf fashion. My questions are about the design fee formula. Are those hard numbers on both Articles 16 and 17, or are they approximations to what we think the design's going to be? And what's the formula that we come up with this figure? And if there are extra money left over in the design phase, can we use those funds for the construction phase? And again, both the harbor master and this gentleman have done a yeoman's job getting these departments where they need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turbit, I think. No?[734.99][734.99](Laughter). No, 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 no. Sorry, I jumped the gun there. They're going to take a minute. So Mr. McNeil's year here. It's also, I believe, Bobby Planzer's father's birthday. I'm going to say happy birthday to him. We suggested to Bobby that he maybe wanted to stay home and celebrate his father's birthday, but he would not miss town meeting for anything in the world, so... Making him very unusual.[771.01][771.01](Laughter).
So the answer to the question for design is that the figure that's being presented was based on numbers from our engineer in the conceptual phase of the project. We only will borrow what is necessary, up to the amount that's authorized.
Okay. Seeing no other hands, we'll go to a vote on Article 16. Does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion as printed in the warrant and made by the Finance Committee. A no vote will defeat that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no.
No.
Okay, I declare that is adopted by a two-thirds vote. Article 17. Article 17 starts on page 27, continues to page 28. I'd ask for your consent to waive the reading. Thank you, and I recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making the Finance Committee's motion as printed in the warrant.
So moved, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Do you want to speak, Ms. Lucy, before I go to Ms. Oda, or should I go to Ms. Oda and get her question and come back to you? Okay. Ms. Oda?
The answer. I assume that Lucy just asked for the funds that she needs. My question is, on the actual facility, is there going to be any larger building down by the harbor, or are we just renovating on the inside and not going to make the footprint any bigger? Just a question.
Chief Lucy?
It's going to be on the same footprint. It's going to be a new building. It will be a little bit higher up, so we don't have the flooding issues that we have right now with our building.
Anything else on this? Okay, seeing none, this does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. It is as printed in the warrant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no.
No.
Okay, I declare that's adopted by a two-thirds vote. Okay. Article 21 is on page 30 of the warrant. It is the motion of the Finance Committee as printed in the warrant. I'd ask for your consent to waive the reading and recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making the Finance Committee's motion.
So moved, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded.
No. Is it on? Okay. My understanding in the past for the Ambulance Reserve Fund was to buy new ambulances and stock them, provide training for the EMTs and such. I guess I'm a little perplexed that it's asking for six new full-time firefighters slash EMTs, and it hasn't gone through the budget process. So I don't know if this is going to become an annual request out of the Ambulance Reserve Fund? And is it fair to other departments that are justifying new positions through their operating budget?
Libby Gibson, Town Manager. If I understand the question correctly, you are asking if you're not understanding how many firefighters... You think that this motion covers six new firefighters. It does not. This is for existing firefighters.
Could you scroll down? Okay.
Doesn't it say up to six full... Okay, maybe not new ones.
They are not new, and this is not the first year we've done this. We've been funding firefighters, some number of firefighters out of the Ambulance Reserve Fund for several years.
So this isn't reflected in their numbers for their operating budget?
There's not a double count, if that's what you mean. Article 8 contains... This is an offset to the fire department budget, and it has gone through the budget process. It went through the regular Finance Committee review process.
Okay. So, on Article 21, requires a majority vote. The motion is as printed in the warrant. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted unanimously. Article 35 starts on page 42 of the warrant, continues to page 43. The Finance Committee motion is moved to take no action on the article, and then there's a fairly long Finance Committee comment. The article sponsor, Mr. Dickler, has provided us with a positive motion. It is... It would be considered a non-binding request in that it is a request to the Board of Selectmen from this meeting, if adopted. I'm going to read the motion because you won't have seen it. Moved that the Board of Selectmen be requested to adopt a tax levy override which could generate up to $30 million of additional funds each year to pay for items not currently being paid for by the town budget or with borrowed funds in conjunction with an adjustment by the... Can we say... Can we change Board of Selectmen in here to Select Board all the way through since we've had that change? Sorry. With an adjustment by the Select Board to the residential exemption and commercial property rates such that the applicable tax increases are borne by non-resident property owners. Is that your motion, Mr. Dickler? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Mr. Dickler? I'm sure Mr. Stover will give you one. He's right there.
Good evening.[1274.08][1274.08](Laughter). Good evening. I'm Howard Dickler, 13 Lions Lane, Tom Nevers. It takes a bit of courage to propose a large tax levy override to a community that is used to making do with its proposition two-and-a-half budget, plus the occasional debt exclusion override. However, I am going to try to convince you that that override would be in all of our best interests. Perhaps I see a different island than everyone else, but I see an island with insufficient revenues for its needs. You can go to any meeting of any town committee, board, or commission, and more often than not, a need is brought forward and the response is almost invariably that there are not funds for that need. So that need has to get in line with all the other unmet needs of the island. Worse than that, maintenance of our existing infrastructure, from sewers to roads to buildings, is annually skimmed on because the dollars run out, and there's the hope that nothing will go wrong. Of course, eventually, something does go wrong, such as expensive cisterns filling up with sand instead of protecting the harbor from stormwater, such as main sewers that fail partly because they haven't been maintained as well as they could have been. And while the sewer was repaired, it has not been yet rehabilitated or strengthened, so we are all still at risk. One of the town committees, the Capital Planning Committee, just finished a comprehensive analysis of the island's capital needs over the next 10 years. It was done with a rigorous protocol to satisfy state rules, and it took a lot of work. For those of you who have not seen it, it is on the town website. But the bottom line is that it asks for $500 million in capital projects over the next 10 years, and that does not include even a single dollar for coastal resilience or changing climate. So 500 million plus, how long do you think that would actually take, given the process that we go through annually? And do you think Mother Nature will spare us for that long? And are you willing to take the risk? What is the alternative? The vast majority of the town's revenue comes from property taxes. So a tax increase is really the only viable choice that I see. Nantucket is very lucky. It has the second lowest rate in the state, $3.53 per thousand of assessed value compared to a state average of over $17. Further, non-residents pay 80% of that amount. And more to the point, the override proposal includes increasing the residential exemption to the maximum, so the non-residents would actually pay more than 90% of the increase. Businesses and most resident homeowners would not see an increase. Very few times in our lifetime will we see an opportunity like this. The proposal has been criticized as poor public policy because it is not tied to a specific project. I disagree because the town could vote at town meeting each and every year as to how that year's money would be spent, providing the needed checks and balances. It has been criticized as unfair to non-residents. I disagree because most of them would rather spend a few more dollars and see their investment protected. It would not hurt the building or real estate industries because the money would be spent to make the island stronger and improve the investment in property. The vote tonight is only a positive motion. For anything to really happen, the Select Board has to put it on the ballot, and all the voters would have to vote for it. I will end with a question. How long are you willing to wait for the needs of Nantucket to be met?
On the motion? Yes. Yes, stand up and someone will bring you a microphone.
Can you hear me now? My name is Colleen Wellden. Good evening. That is what our year-round family of threes tax bill would be for our modest two-bedroom home. $16,000. We're not wealthy beyond our wildest dreams. My husband is a 63-year-old HVAC contractor. I have a clerical job, and our daughter is three years away from heading off to college. My husband's great-grandfather purchased the property as a fishing camp back in the 1800s for pennies on the dollar because nobody wanted to live way out in Matigat. Only two small lots remain in the hands of his descendants. Ours is one of them. Can any of you afford $16,000 for your yearly tax bill? We're not facing this increase in taxes alone. There are other longtime island families who will see massive tax increases if this article is implemented. I've had occasion to sit here and listen to discussions during other articles during this town meeting and many, many before it... Sorry, I'm shaking. ...about affordable housing and how people want their children to be able to afford to live here. I remember a few years ago, being brought to tears as a woman that I didn't even know stood on those stairs right over there and cried because she wanted her children to be able to stay on Nantucket, the only home they had ever known. This community stood behind her and families like her, and we funded and built Sachem's Path, embarked on Covenant House programs, and found countless other ways to make it possible for the next generation of island families to stay here. Fast forward just a few short years, and along comes this Article 35. I'm seeing and hearing the "who cares about them, they're all rich, they can afford it" reactions to an article like this, and it makes me want to cry. Don't we count? Shouldn't we be able to afford to stay in our homes and pass them along to our children, too? Last Friday, I went to the town clerk's office, and I bought the most recent Nantucket Street listing available. Here's a quick breakdown of people that I know of personally that will be adversely affected by Article 35 and have their yearly tax bill increased by $1,000 or more. 13 teachers and school staff, seven town employees, six first responders, 11 fishermen, 13 nurses, doctors, and therapists, eight restaurant owners and managers, five personal trainers, 12 artists, 11 nonprofit administrative staff, three veterinarians, six accounting professionals, eight shopkeepers, over 40 contractors, and 24 retirees. I don't know everybody, so I know that there are likely way more people that cannot afford this tax hike.
Yes, Mr. Worth?
If you haven't read our comment about...
If you haven't read our comment about this article, please do. I'm not going to rehash it. But I would like to point out a couple of things. First of which, we entertained Mr. Dickler for 30 to 45 minutes of just one-on-one conversation, and the members of the Finance Committee have had a lot of discussion with the Finance Department to fully understand the article and its ramifications. But a couple of things to point out. We just tonight have approved over $55 million of capital expenditure, of which $24 million will go on your tax rate. The balance is with our enterprise funds, principally sewer, which if you look at whatever that article is, it's about $22 million. This island has plenty of capacity to raise the money that is necessary to move forward. We had a very healthy discussion about some of the articles this evening, and that's precisely in our comment what we hope for so that when we do spend our money, we are all, or at least a majority, in agreement that it's appropriate and presumably is going to the right needs that the island has. So 55, 50, what was my number? I added it up. It's 50-odd some million dollars just tonight that we approved, actually 65 that we approved. So we clearly have an appetite to fix the things that are wrong. The Finance Department, along with Debbie Dilworth, has relooked at some of the numbers, and contrary to what Mr. Dickler proposes, many of you, many of us, I'm one of them, who have residential exemptions, have the potential to see your tax rate go up under his proposal. On the articles that we voted today that are going to show up on your tax rate, your tax rate for the average property, about $1.2 million, which is how the Finance Department calculates it, is going to go up 4%, $103 based upon the analysis that I have here. Under Mr. Dickler's proposal, assuming you have an exemption, your tax rate is going to go up $762 next year, or 29%. And that's just, without going into the details, it's how our exemptions are calculated in the actual dollar caps that are part of that. So under Mr. Dickler's proposal, even if you are exempt, you're going to see a fairly significant increase in your taxes. With no exemptions, so for our residents on Nantucket who have property that isn't exempt, and for our second homeowners, they're facing anywhere from 38, 38 to, basically 38% to 43% increase in their taxes. Let me finish by saying, I, along with many other members of town administration, have heard from a lot of our seasonal residents, so many of them friends of yours. I have heard from people never heard of them before, don't recognize their names, and, excuse me, their message to me is pretty much the same. And I don't, I'm not going to read this full email, but it's very short, but it's basically the kind of response that I have been getting, and I know our town manager and others have been getting. We spend all summer on Nantucket and a great deal of time here in the off-season. We employ a caretaker. We enjoy the restaurants quite frequently. We shop. We belong to the Nantucket Historical Association. Mariah Mitchell, this person's son, attended camps here for seven years. This year will be their eighth. They keep their house updated, so they've employed local architects, landscapers, painters, plumbers, electricians, et cetera. Can't tell you how many times they've spent money at Bartletts. They're good citizens of Nantucket. They're respectful of the island, the wildlife, the peoples, and the cars, but they are not super wealthy. This is the fallacy of what we are hearing here tonight, is that everybody who has a second home here is extremely wealthy. We heard the woman over here about generational ownership of property. That's another theme that runs through this, which is that if we establish a process by which we are taxing our summer and second homeowners, we put in peril their ability of their next generation to enjoy Nantucket the way they have and the way we all have. So you know where the Finance Committee came out on this? This is obviously non-binding sense of the committee, but we very much feel that it's well within the capability of the town to meet its future needs, and financially, we're very fortunate to be in that position. And I would leave you with that, and to future town meetings, as our capital needs come before you to discuss them and make good decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Dilworth?
Thank you, Mad Moderator. I sense that I don't need to speak, but I just wanted to confirm that I ran some numbers this morning. First off, I do commend Dr. Dickler for having the goodwill to put forward ideas to do some of the needs that we have. However, I hear from the seasonal residents more often than anybody in this room, usually about once a year after the tax bills go out, and I know they would not be happy with this. But additionally, running the numbers, there's about 2,278 residential exemption properties. 55% would see an increase under this plan. And in addition to what the former speaker said about the firefighters and the yoga instructors, in one of those higher brackets would be one tax assessor who would not be happy, so I urge you to not support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up in the back?
Island in Sconset, and we love this place. I'm a resident here, but we put our house in a residential trust, so our kids would be able to have it when we passed because we knew that it had increased so much in value, they would never be able to afford it. And therefore, we don't qualify for an exemption. And there are lots of other people that have LLCs or trusts that they put in place so they could pass on this wonderful place to their kids. And because of, if this passed, they wouldn't have the money to pay the taxes on it. So I think you need to remember that a lot of them are us.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Okay, I don't see, I don't see any hands, so I think we can just go to a vote. This is a non-binding question that was brought forward by Dr. Dickler. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Yes, he has, because it's our, it's the motion that I read in at the beginning, because our processes, we always have to have a positive motion, and the Finance Committee motion is negative, so if you were voting on a negative motion, yes would mean no, and no would mean yes. So instead, Dr. Dickler put forward the motion that's on the screen. So when you vote yes, you'd be adopting Dr. Dickler's motion, and no vote would defeat that motion. Is that clear? Yeah, okay. So all those in favor of Dr. Dickler's motion, please say aye. I like your spirit, Dr. Dickler, I really do. All those opposed? Okay, thank you. So, Article 47. Article 47 starts on page 58, continues to page 59, where you'll find the Planning Board motion. You'll recall, we had a little technical to take out the "and" in number one, so that number one reads, "by placing property at map 67, Prussel 471, 1 Werow-Werow Lane, currently located in the country overlay district in the town overlay district." The motion is otherwise as printed in the warrant, and I'd ask for your unanimous consent to waive the reading of that motion, and I will recognize the chairman of the Planning Board, Ms., chairperson of the Planning Board, excuse me, Ms. Williams, for the purpose of making that motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. This was called by Ms. Goss. I guess I'll go to you, Ms. Goss, unless the Planning Board wants to... No, okay. Ms. Goss?
I'm Vicky Goss. I live at 8 Blueberry Lane, which is off of South Shore Road, which is, and Werow-Werow Lane is also off of South Shore Road. Could we have a map? And could we have a map showing the current...
We're working on it.
Showing also the current town and country overlay in that area. My problem with putting a town overlay in here is that we're starting to get a little mission creep of town overlay down South Shore Road, and one of the, one of the things that people who want to increase density tend to say is, "Well, it's in the town overlay district, so it's kind of okay if, if density is increased in that area." And I'd much rather we didn't, we're looking at another 40B in that area, another 300 cars in that area, and I just assume that every, that the cobblestones remain in the road, as it were. Just, you know, please remove, my amendment would be on this article to remove...
Oh, wait, you're making an amendment?
I'm making the amendment, please, I'm sorry, just to remove Section 1 from Article 47.
Okay. And this map we're looking at was, that was the, that was not, that was...
That was not the overlays.
Okay, that was the Evergreen Way overlay. Is there, did you have two maps, maybe? Put it up again. Okay, put up that map again. Oh, I see it. Okay. Sorry, it's very subtle. Do you guys have a pointer? Can you point at the blue? That's the section, right there.
So there's a tiny little blue that wants to be suddenly in the town overlay district.
There we go.
Is there more town overlay in that area?
Yes. But let me get your, let me get your amendment. So your amendment is to strike...
To strike Section 1 of Article 47.
To strike Section 1 from the motion on Article 47. And is there a second? Okay. So, and you've kind of said what you had to say about that.
I've said what I had to say.
Okay, so let me go to Ms. Snell.
Hi, I'm Leslie Snell, speaking on behalf of the Planning Board. And first, I would like to take the opportunity to thank the voters in the room tonight for supporting the Planning Board and their motions on Articles 36 through 46. Thank you all. This article is entirely housekeeping in nature. The underlying zoning district was already moved from a country district to a town district at a prior town meeting. That was done through a citizen petition. The citizen petition did not include changing it from the town, excuse me, from the country overlay district to the town overlay district. So this would be moving it to the overlay district that corresponds with the underlying zoning district. Nothing would be changed in terms of the minimum lot size, the ground cover, the setbacks, the uses that are allowed, all of those would remain the same. Again, this is just to change it to the overlay district that corresponds with the zoning district. I would ask for you to please support the Planning Board and their motion on this article.
Ms. Snell, before you sit down, is the other green area, like South Pasture Lane, is all of that currently town?
That is all in the town overlay district, and it's also in the R40 zoning district, which this property is also included within.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Seeing no hands, I think we'll go to a vote on Article 47. It is a zoning article, so it does require a two-thirds vote. Oh, no, no, sorry, we're voting on the amendment. So we're voting on Ms. Goss's amendment. Ms. Goss's amendment is to strike Paragraph 1, which eliminates the 1 Werow-Werow Lane property, which was being currently located in the country overlay district, moving it to the town overlay district. So that requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt Ms. Goss's amendment. A no vote will defeat that amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is not adopted. Is there anything further on Article 47? Oh, the overly district, okay. In number two, over... That one's correct. Now, and then go down and fix that one, too. Okay, is that all right, Ms. Williams? That's a friendly amendment. Okay. So now you'd be voting on the Planning Board's motion with the "and" stricken and the overlay corrected in two places. It's otherwise as printed in the warrant. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, so we're going to do a quick hand count on that. So all those in favor of the motion on Article 47, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised until the tellers have counted your vote. So the town clerk is so kind, she leaves me notes from 200 years ago, and it's always a surprise. I never know what they're going to say. So 200 years ago, May 1818, "We, the subscribers, having been appointed a committee to inquire into the expediency of establishing schools in the town of Nantucket, and having given the subject that investigation which the importance of it demands, ask leave respectfully to report that we find that there is in this town about 300 children from 3 to 14 years of age who do not attend any school and whose parents, in our opinion, are unable to give them even the rudiments of an education. There is, after this committee report, there is no further action taken by the meeting." Those opposed to the motion on Article 47, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised till the tellers have had an opportunity to count your vote. So two people in Nantucket's history are apparently turning 200 this year, which is sort of interesting. You probably already are and all know who they are. I know Harvey Young always knows all these questions, right, Harvey? What two important Nantucket people turned 200 years old this year? And who else? There you go. See, I knew you guys knew that. This hand count is gonna be embarrassing to me, by the way. So when we're done with this, we're going to Article 48, which starts on page 60. Okay. Sorry. Article 47, yes, 300, no, 36. That definitely passes by a 2/3s vote. Thank you. So Article 48. We had a technical amendment that we read into the record at the beginning of the meeting where we inserted this language in 1D1, except in the village height overlay district, VHOD. Otherwise, the motion is as printed in the warrant, and I'll ask for your unanimous consent to waive the reading. Thank you. And I'll recognize Ms. Williams, Chair of the Planning Board, for the purpose of making that motion. Thank you. And its motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Collier called this. Do you want me to go right to him? Okay. Do you have a map for this? Yeah, let's go to the map.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Cormac Collier for the Nantucket Land Council. I am the Executive Director of the Nantucket Land Council. I have two questions, and then I'd actually like to follow him up with maybe additional question and certainly a comment or two. First off, is there a map associated with the entirety of the article? And then, secondly, if the Planning Board could give its, essentially give an explanation of what the article does and doesn't do, because this is quite novel and hasn't been done at town meeting before? And then also what their reasoning is behind the article? And I'd like to follow it up, if I could. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Leslie Snell for the Planning Board. So the approval of this article would allow, through the issuance of a special permit, an additional 2.5% of ground cover in the village residential zoning district. The village residential district has a maximum ground cover of 10%, so you could go up to 12.5% if the additional ground cover is limited to a single-story structure or a portion of a structure that's single-story. The intent of this article is to allow increased ground cover in exchange for lower structure height. Some of the area plans talk about keeping the structure height lower in village areas. So this is an attempt to try that concept out in a limited area. Village residential, which you can see on the map, is in a small portion of Monomoy, about halfway down Hummock Pond Road, and out at Cisco. I would ask that you support the Planning Board motion on this article.
Mr. Collier?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm not sure if everybody understood that, but it was fairly explanatory. But what I want to really key in on here is that there is no exchange going on. Essentially, what the article is proposing is to increase ground cover from 10% to 12.5%. That extra 2.5%, you can do it as long as it's 16 feet. They're not reducing anything as of right. There's no consideration that the town is getting in return in terms of a decrease of height in the, in what is allowed as of right. There's no decrease in terms of ground cover in what is allowed as of right. They're essentially just, it's just a plus. It's just an add-on. My biggest concern before they did the amendment was it included the entirety of Maticet. A number of Maticet residents got very upset about this, petitioned the Planning Board, and the Planning Board removed that, removed that before town meeting. The two remaining areas are, if you squint, at the beginning of Milestone Road on the left-hand side, as you go up to the beginning of Pulpus Road on the left-hand side. And then what's more concerning, I actually think there's a third area, is there, Leslie Andrew? Right there, that, where we're moving all the way around?
Yeah. Scott, right there.
Right underneath Hummock Pond Road, is that an extra area, too?
Yes.
So there's one at the end of the road, which I'm concerned about, but I just want to make sure everybody knows. Is there one in between there?
Yes.
Yes, there is, thank you. Oh, that's the old, the old Northern Powers property. Okay. So my biggest concern is the end of this road. Basically, it's about seven or so lots, a budding marble way, and also a butt Hummock Pond. We're talking about thousands and thousands, because they're very large lots, increase in terms of ground cover and impervious surface. It just makes no sense in terms of increasing the amount of development potential and buildability in this very extremely rural area. Secondly, so that's, that's just, for me, it just, it just doesn't make any sense. I don't know why they're trying to promote that. If it's really just to try and promote the area on, on Milestone and on Pulpus, why not just go through the proper channels in terms of going to the ZBA? That's why we have a ZBA. If there's a necessity to increase ground cover, go to the ZBA and make your request, prove that there is a hardship. I don't understand why we're now transferring that power to the Planning Board to do it by special permit. And again, the town's not getting any consideration in return for changing its zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Up in the back? Just wait one second, it kicks in.
Keeps, keep talking. Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name's Judith Wedner, I live in Quinnet. I am concerned, in the same vein as Mr. Collier. First thing is, it seems to me, adding more surface, especially after the spring we've had, the kind of flooding we've had, particularly in that sensitive area near the ocean, is just not a good idea. Whenever you put additional roofing out or things like that, you're reducing the capacity of the ground to soak up the water. Seems like a very bad idea. Second, I think by allowing that kind of addition of additional cost is going to arise because you're having more space there that is going to be built up, and that's not in our interest if we're trying to keep costs down. Finally, I think that, that sense of creeping added density, added mass, presence of buildings that really affect the viewscape here is a bad idea. So I hope we'll vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Charles Stott, and I represent the Maticet Residents Association. The MRA strongly supports the Maticet area plan that was adopted some years ago. Article 48, as originally proposed, limits the height of additional buildings to 16 feet, which is consistent with the Maticet area plan. But it also increases density, which is inconsistent with our plan. It allows an extra 2.5% of ground cover at one story with a special permit, but the net result is the same massing and density as currently allowed, plus an additional 500 square feet of ground cover. The maximum size of a two-story home under the originally proposed article on a 20,000-square-foot lot could increase from 4,000 to 4,500 square feet, way too big for Maticet. The average lot size, according to the Planning Department in 2009, is 27,000 square feet in our village residential district.
Mr. Stott? You seem to be addressing the original motion, but that's not what we're discussing.
Okay. I thought folks might benefit from some background, so I'll cut to the chase.
Yeah, if you could, that would be, that would be good.
Okay. So we expressed concern to the Planning Department, and the Planning Board was very responsive in, in addressing the concerns of our members. Accordingly, we have to, we encourage you to support this article because we represent a constituency in Maticet that is opposed to the original article but is supportive of the accommodation made by the Planning Board.
Thank you. All right. So seeing, yeah?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just a few last points. So the allowance for the additional ground cover, that would be about 500 square foot, 500 square feet, on the minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, would be subject to review by the Planning Board through the issuance of a special permit. It would require a butter notification, publication in the newspaper, and the Planning Board would be able to review the specifics of each proposal on a case-by-case basis. The other 20,000-square-foot zoning district that many of the VR properties were located in was, had a maximum ground cover of 12.5% by right, whereas this is a special permit allowance. So this is a new concept, and I would recommend, or I would recommend that you follow the Planning Board's recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you. Up by you, Mr. Stover?
Hi, Campbell Sutton. And I just wanted to second Mr. Collier's point on the zoning board, where they can currently go and apply for a variance or what, whatever the name was. And I'm not sure why that power needs to be turned over to the Planning Board versus where it currently resides.
Yeah, up in the back, Ms. Ray?
Hi there, Edie Ray. You know, an experiment sometimes is a good thing, but sometimes it doesn't work out like you thought it might. And it seems to me that if this is some new grand experiment, that it's much, the scope of it is much too big. And it also seems to be, and I could be wrong, and I'd love to be corrected if I am, but if I wanted to put up any kind of a building on Nantucket, I do believe I have to go to the HDC. And the HDC takes into account what I want to build where I am. And it seems to me that if we're worried about things getting too tall in certain places, the HDC has been taking care of that problem nicely for a good many years. So I really don't think that this is necessary to have this new experiment. So I hope that everybody here will vote this down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So on the motion, as printed in the warrant, with the technical change read in at the beginning of the meeting? Oh, yes? Okay. Mr. Leonard?
You ready? Yeah, Scott Leonard, Madam Moderator, thank you. How were these three test sites chosen? And that kind of alludes to the end of Hummock Pond Road there, where they have hard armored behind the houses that are on the beach side. And those houses will be, eventually need to be moved to the other side of the, of that bulkhead.
Those are the village, that's the village residential zoning district, the VR district.
Okay. So how, and how did they choose these three sites?
They chose the village, the village residential district. It's the entire village residential district less the village height overlay district, and you're left with those three spots.
Okay. Thank you.
And the waitress, we need a waitress down here. So on the motion on Article 48, it does require a 2/3s vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
That's not adopted. So Article 51. At any time between articles, please feel free to get up and stretch and move around in your seat. I know it's a long time. I'm standing, so I'm perfectly comfortable, but I know you guys are sitting for a long time. I thought about doing it during the hand count, but then I realized that would be very hard to do a hand count when people were stretching, so. Article 51 starts on page 63, continues to page 64. The Planning Board motion is as printed in the warrant. I'll ask that you waive the reading. Thank you. And I'll recognize Ms. Williams for the purpose of making the motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. This was also called by Ms., Mr. Collier. I will go right to you, Mr. Collier. Oh, you didn't? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lang, and I know you're up in the back somewhere.
Good evening. My name is Bob Lang. I am a year-round resident, celebrating this year 45 years of living on Nantucket. I reside at 7 Masquod Avenue in Surfside, which is directly to the south of the subject property. I purchased my property in 2013, as is. It's approximately one-acre lot. I'm opposed to Article 51, or I should say, I'm very concerned about it. First of all, the subject property has been up before town, this before. In 2015, it came up as Article 55. It was in with other lots for rezoning, and it was defeated. In 2016, it was defeated as it stood alone, as it does this evening. And in 2016, at special town meeting, it was withdrawn at the request of an abutter or a nearby resident, not myself. What concerns me about this is I would, I would like to see the area preserved to the extent that the limited-use general district now preserves this property. This is not just a situation of adding another lot. If this article passes, it will be subdivided. That's my understanding, that there will be two houses put on there for sale. And this is a major change that would affect our small neighborhood. Masquod Avenue is about 600 feet long and services about seven residents. It's not only going to be one extra lot, but it's going to increase the ground cover ratio as well. As I indicated in 2016, I did speak at that time, when it came up alone, that I have concerns about the lowness of the lot, about the effects that a large septic system would put on the area. When I purchased my own property, the, there was a regulatory failure of the septic system, which necessitated putting the leaching field up on a higher, higher plane. And most of the subject property in the area that I believe they would create another lot is fairly low. So my concern is for the area, you know, in preserving the type of neighborhood that we have, as you can see- As you can see there, the LUG zone actually connects up to some land bank property, and it's a natural buffer that is between, a wooded buffer for the most part, between the Field Avenue area and the Surfside Road area. I feel that the, the two-acre zoning gives us the privacy, the peace and quiet, and I would like to see this neighborhood preserved as it is. So thank you very much for your, for listening. Appreciate your concern.
Thank you. Is Mr. Fitch here, or anyone who wants to speak in favor of this article? Yes?
Hello, thank you. I'm Ryan Fitch, owner of 8 Masseycat. Come here tonight to ask for the zone change from LUG 2 to LUG 1. When we purchased this lot, it had two existing houses on it, which are up on the board right now. It was a 2.2-acre lot already with two different dwellings on the property. The current property layout here will not be altered due to the zoning change. What creates the density of this property would be the septic, which would, a bedroom count. So we aren't asking to add any more than is already able to be put on this property. The abutting properties are an average of one acre. And as you can see up on the board there, that there are four budding lots to my property that are roughly a half acre. Meaning that even with the change to LUG 1, the lot size will still be above average for the location. Both homes that were on this property have been previously repurposed to other year-round residents. This proposed zoning change is full support of the Planning Board and Finance Committee. All we're simply asking is to be allowed what our neighbors have. And you can see directly to the south of us, that property, and I think 2013, was rezoned from Lug 2 to Lug 1. So we're just asking to have what our neighbors already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So on the, yes? Ms. Snow?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This was a citizen petition, but it received a positive recommendation from the Planning Board. The Planning Board reviewed this. It would allow the creation of one additional lot, but that density is consistent with the properties to the south, which have been developed at about a one-acre density, and properties to the east that are about half-acre in density. Since 2005, you know, a lot of rezoning has taken place that has resulted in moving properties from high-density districts to low-density districts, and this would result, again, in the creation of one additional lot. The Planning Board found that to be consistent with the area plan and the other work that they have done. Please support the Planning Board motion on this article.
Thank you, yes?
Hello, Carl Linval, resident of 5 Boulevard. I just had a question if the Planning Board's motion has been positive on this each time this person's brought this to town meeting?
Yes. Okay. All right. Well, seeing no hands, we'll go to a vote on Article 51. The motion is as printed in the warrant. It does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no? That motion is not adopted. Okay? You'd like a hand count? All right. So, all those in favor, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised until the tellers have had an opportunity to count your vote. I have to say, just starting out here, I don't think it's even going to make a majority in favor, but I'm happy to do the hand count. Okay. All those opposed to the motion on Article 51, please raise your hands, keep your hands raised until the tellers have had an opportunity to count your vote. You know? Okay, so on Article 51, yes, 142, no, 235. It is not adopted. Article 52. So Article 52 is on page 64 of the warrant. 52 is on page 64 of the warrant. The Planning Board motion is as printed in the warrant. I'd asked for your consent to waive the reading. And recognize Ms. Williams for the purpose of making the motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Now, this is a little unusual. I'm going to recognize the affected homeowner who had this article brought forward on his behalf, the owner of 56 South Shore Road, Joe Brodigan. Mr. Brodigan? If you want, you can come here, right to the Selectmen's Table and, the Select Board's Table, and take their microphone.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Joe Brodigan, and my wife and I own the property at 56 South Shore Road. And while we're relatively new property owners in Nantucket, we fell in love with the island a long, long time ago, and it was always our dream to have a house here with ourselves and our three daughters. And regardless of your vote tonight, I'd like to thank you and also let you know how fortunate we feel, especially going through all these meetings and hearing how protected you are of your, of your town here, how fortunate we are to be a part of your community. What we're asking you to do tonight is to approve this article, which would, my understanding is, change the zoning of this lot from an LUG 1, LUG 2 to an LUG 1. The lot is, it's got one house on it, and it's a smaller house, but the lot is very, very big. It's almost, it's over 1.8 acres. And it's cleared, and it looks like a big giant field. And we bought it almost, it'll be on September 13th of, it'll be five years that we've had it. And it's my understanding that a couple of years ago, there was a petition that was approved to rezone the lots that surround our lot in, in three different, in three different areas. And if you can see, I don't know if that's the map or not?
Yeah, that's your map.
That we're surrounded on three sides by lots that used to be LUG 2, and that would change to LUG 1. And except going towards the, towards the ocean, and those lots still remain, LUG 2. The application, I believe, was made, and it was thought that we were included in it, and we were actually told at one point we were included in it, but apparently we were inadvertently left out of that application. I was not able to participate in that process. I was in the hospital with extended illness. But when we found out that we were not included, we asked to be put on to make that request. The lot we have is very consistent in size. It's almost the same size as the other lots that were approved. I understand that, you know, the town's concerns about density, it's not our intention to sell it. What we intend to do, hopefully at some point, if, if we're able to, is to build another house there and be able to convey it to our kids, so our kids can, you know, also with their families, you know, enjoy and live on, on Nantucket. So as I said before, regardless of the outcome tonight, thank you very much for your consideration. And all we're looking for here is what our neighbors got and what it is. The lot is consistent, the same size, and it's only one lot. And I hope it doesn't make too much of a dent or a problem with the density issue here on the island. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Williams?
Do I still have to do switch? Technology. I'm sure you're all glad I haven't popped up already by now, but, gosh, gotta say it, put it out there. Last or, a couple of years ago, I can't remember how long ago, when we did Trip Drive, we saw this lot at the Planning Board, and we didn't know what was going on with it. It should have been included. When we did Trip Drive, it was an overwhelming vote in favor of going to one acre on Trip Drive. Everything going from Surfside Road all the way up to this point was changed from two acres to one acre over several meetings. We changed what's on the backside of it to the east. We ran all the way up to this lot, and everything across the street is now one acre. Earlier this evening, in Article 56, I believe, you guys put this and 52 next to it, right to the north, into the sewer district. Apparently, they can tie into the sewer by going directly to the sewer beds, according to the sewer director. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I had a conversation with him earlier today about another issue, and that came up. It would be a matter of fairness. We have talked many times at the Planning Board about everything south of this, which are a couple of stables and some really large sort of rural lots as you get down towards the sewer beds, that we weren't going to go much farther than this one lot at this time. And I think it is a matter of fairness, but we did ask where the guy was back then when we were doing Trip, and we couldn't get a hold of him. And then we found out after the fact at the office that he had been ill and not able to attend or asked to be included in that zoning change. So I'm asking you to support the Planning Board's motion and put this one lot in. And just as a matter of course, a two-acre lot is allowed 4% ground cover, which leaves 96% uncovered by ground cover. If it was split into LUG 1, that is still 7%, and that's 93% de facto open space. So we're not talking a lot of density here, and we're not talking any density that the rest of us, a couple of hundred of us, already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fitzgibbon, you called this, if you want to...
Bonnie Fitzgibbon, 68 South Shore Road. And first of all, I just want to clarify something. As far as I know, the whole Trip Drive situation is across the street from this property and does not abut this property. Is that correct?
It's directly across the street.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Purposes, it's an abutting situation.
Even if it's across the street and does not touch this property?
Yeah.
Okay. So, well, once again, here we are with South Shore Road under the hammer of zoning changes. And with all respect for Mr. Brodigan's concerns and wanting to build for his family, I want to say that there are a lot of us who probably have family, myself included, that are suffering from housing shortages, et cetera. But what this represents is the creeping, the creeping role of turning South Shore Road into, changing it from LUG 2, perhaps all the way down to LUG 1. And South Shore Road continues to be a target year after year after year of the Planning Board. I think this is a very dangerous precedent because this lot by lot breakdown of zoning sets up a potential domino effect where one change turns into another, and then another, and then another, and pretty soon development is unstoppable, and the entire face of a road or an area is irrevocably changed. This property might be consistent with a few of the abutting properties, but it certainly would be inconsistent with the majority of the properties on the lower end of South Shore Road, and it's very close. It, it sits in this lower part of South Shore Road. So, the other thing I want to say is, you know, as Linda Williams said last year at town meeting, in an unprecedented stance, the Planning Board actually declared that this lower part of South Shore Road was in fact countrylike and rural in nature and configuration and should stay this way. So I just want to say that South Shore Road, poor South Shore Road, it continues to try to hold on to some origin of its rural character. I ask you, please don't let this area fall to one lot after another after another being changed. Please say no to this article and stop the, this development that is, you know, continuing to encroach on South Shore Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name's John McGee, 60, South Shore Road, which is the very next lot south of that. And I'm going to ask you to please vote no on this. I voted no on every one of these articles over the years as it slowly starts to creep down. I know people at the front have said over the years that when this area was originally zoned at two acres, it was just kind of a throwaway. We don't know, no, we don't know what we want to do with it. But I know that I bought out there specifically because it was two-acre zoning. I wanted that, you know, space for me and my kids, my family to kind of grow up in. And I can tell you right now that I'm never going to come to you and ask for my lot to be changed, but I would like to have some open space north of me, too. So please vote no on this. I voted yes on all the special things that have happened in this area. I voted yes on the buildings behind me, to the stations, all the stuff that's out in that area. So I just ask you please to vote no on this and keep at least this part of South Shore Road open space for as many families as I can. Thanks.
Thank you. Way up in the back.
Patrick Tafe? If the GIS website is up to date, there are 17 parcels on the east side or the right side, the way the map is facing right now, that are in LUG 2. At the beginning of South Shore Road, there are... At the beginning of South Shore Road, there are two parcels that are, one's close to half an acre, one is under a quarter acre. And the first house that fronts South Shore Road and Surfside Road is a two-acre parcel. So right now, it looks to me like the entire east side of South Shore Road is two-acre. And yes, to the east, there are one-acre parcels. To the west, it's been chopped up. But I still don't understand why the planning board wants to chop up every single two-acre lot on this island. I wouldn't vote no. This, to me, seems like spot zoning. The Brodigan family can certainly build three homes on their parcel today. I don't know if he knew that. But primary dwelling, secondary dwelling, a tertiary dwelling, you can, I don't know how many children you have, but there's three houses right there. If we were to chop this in half, there's potential for six houses right there. And if we keep chopping all the land up on Nantucket, no one will be able to drive anywhere, so we won't even need to improve the roads.
Thank you. Please, please don't do that. Ms. Murphy?
I'm assuming everybody can hear me. I guess my question is, can anybody explain to me why this is not spot zoning and why it has become the purview of the planning board and isn't being taken to the zoning board?
It's not spot zoning because it's surrounded by LUG 1 and is being connected to LUG 1, so it's not a spot.
Okay.
If it was going to, like, ROH or some R5, then it would definitely be a spot.
Thank you.
Okay. So is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor, Mr. Law?
Just a little wrap-up before we voted down. So I just want to say a couple of things to some people that are in this room that know, that know who they are. No names, Sarah. No names, don't worry.
You behave over there.
I'm behaving. There's a lot of people in here that have got zoning changes for their families that vote against other people's families. It's very interesting how this happens. I've been down here a long time now. I've watched it. I don't have all the years in my head, but I know pretty much everybody that we've helped. Now, when I say we've helped, we can't, when somebody comes in with a citizen article, this gentleman did, and other people in this room did, we have to look at it. We're not going to just say, whoa, we don't care about you. You're rich. You're not going to get richer. You got the land for free back in 1980, like I did. Lucky, I'm lucky. It's like a lot of you are, especially up in the back. And so we'll have a little laugh because we need to. Next year will be a different feeling, okay? Maybe we'll have less storms. We won't worry so much about that next year. We'll worry about something else. This area, if it was owned by Ralph Marvell, by some of the Burchels, maybe Albert Johnson, maybe Walter Goackey's father, maybe Donald McDonald, any of those guys owned this property back in 1972, guess what the zoning would have been? RC2. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So does anyone wish to speak in favor of this? Okay, so I don't think we need to pile on Mr. Brodigan anymore. We can go to a vote on Article 52. It is a zoning article. It requires a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat it. All those in favor of the motion on Article 52, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is not adopted. Okay. So we're heading into a stretch of five articles. But before we do that, Article 66 was called by Ellen Ray. And I heard from Mrs. Ray, and she does not want to pursue Article 66. So is there anyone who wants to step into her shoes and discuss Article 66? Yes? I'm sorry, let me get you a microphone. I just can't, I can't hear you.
Madam Moderator, Kathy Ward on Silver Street. And I'd just like an explanation of what this is. That's my question.
Article 66?
Just a further explanation.
Okay.
Details?
Here's what I'm going to do. I'll put your name down for Article 66. And if sometime between now and when we get to Article 66, you could come down and maybe have a, or maybe Mr. Burns will come up and speak with you. Front row of, front row of the back section, Mr. Burns, Mr. Stover will show you. If you guys could have a conversation, maybe your question could be answered. Maybe not, but we'll see. We'll get, and then we'll come back to Article 66 in turn. So these next five articles, 58, 59, 62, 63, and 64, all have procedural, legal, all kinds of issues. So I'm going to recuse myself for 63 and 64. But on the three that I'm doing, 58, 59, and 62, I'm going to take a positive motion from the sponsors of those articles. And we're going to have some debate. But I, I just want you to know that because our time is, you know, limited, and because these articles have issues one way or another and are either not allowed or will be non-binding, I'm going to try to, try to limit debate because I hear from a lot of people how frustrated they feel when we spend tons of time on things that aren't ultimately binding. So with that said, I'm going to go to Article 58, which is on page 69 of the warrant. The Finance Committee motion is moved not to adopt the article. Finance Committee comment is the town meeting does not have the authority to waive privilege fees. Under the general laws and the Nantucket Sewer Act, the sewer commissioners have sole and exclusive authority to set privilege fees consistent with any town meeting vote that authorized the privilege fee in the first place when the appropriation was made, to which the privilege fee applies. Further, there is no legal basis absent special legislation to exempt only year-round residents from the sewer privilege fee. I do have a motion from Mrs. Myers, who called the article, and that motion is as follows. Moved that the Board of Sewer Commissioners be requested to waive for year-round residents who are required to connect to the town sewer system in consideration of the expenses to be incurred, the one-time privileged sewer fee of $6,000. Is that your motion, Mrs. Myers? Okay, if you could get a microphone, is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Mrs. Myers?
Patty, Patty Myers, 28 Kelly Road.
If you could really speak directly into the microphone, it would be great.
Patty Myers, 28 Kelly Road. I'd like to make a comment on the process of submitting a citizen article. The town council was not available when I went to make this, participate in this democratic process. And also, that used to be, that town council was available up until the November date that we were supposed to take our articles in to. The next thing that I would like to say is that the Select Board would be more supportive if they were to contact the person that puts it in the article and discuss it with them, or have them come into a meeting and say, hey, listen, this is what's wrong with your thing. I submitted this, and I didn't know what I was doing. So that's number one. But now that the town has cited, the state has cited us to fix the pollution issue that we have, we had several other options that we could have done, like increasing the flow in the upper harbor. But instead, we went with the septic system. And I know we can't stop the flow of pollution from New York, but we could stop the development on our shores. And limiting lawn size would be very helpful for the runoff that goes down into our harbor. The system that I'm going to be forced to put on my property, it's going to cost me over $50,000, and it's going to destroy my mature gardens and my, all my garden beds. And I've been there for 25 years, so they're pretty extensive. And I would rather spend the $50,000 on my grandchildren's education. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. So on Mrs. Myers' motion, seeing no hands, I'm going to go to a vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is not adopted. I do believe, just for people who do submit citizens' articles, I believe the town council was available for two days in November or October? In October, town council was available for two days in October to assist citizens putting in warrant articles. And it was advertised. Once you put in a citizen's article, just for the future, if anyone's putting in a citizen's article, you want to look carefully at the Finance Committee's meeting schedule. They meet pretty much all winter to discuss warrant articles. You can go in and talk with them directly and get at least feedback, if not guidance, on how you might correct your motion or what you might do. Unfortunately, it is incumbent upon the person promoting an idea to be the person who kind of takes the, takes the laboring war and pursues the information and goes in. So just for people who want to go forward in the future. Article 59. Is anyone here who wants to propose this motion on 59? No, right? Okay. So if no one's here, then I am going to... And is there anyone here who wants to put forth a motion or discuss Article 59? Yes? Oh, there is someone back there.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Chris Humphrey, 14 Battle Lane.
Oh, okay, Mr. Humphrey. I, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there.
That's okay, we were a little distracted.
So the motion on Article 59 is, the proposed motion is as printed on the screen. Move that the Nantucket Board of Health be requested to explore regulating the use and sale of herbicides and pesticides containing glyphosate on Nantucket.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Mr. Humphrey?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Chris Humphrey, 14 B, Battle Lane. Darcy Creach had initially presented this article. She unfortunately was not able to attend this evening, so I agreed to present it on her behalf. The purpose is to raise awareness about the health hazards associated with glyphosate and its use on Nantucket. Glyphosate is a chemical that is used in over 750 herbicide products, is readily used on Nantucket for weed control, and it is also used to eradicate invasive fragmity species in the island's ponds and wetlands. The World Health Organization recently opined that glyphosate is a human health hazard and a probable carcinogen. As a result of this, there are several countries that have banned the use of this product. And in light of this, it is suggested that the Board of Health explore regulating the sale and use of glyphosate on Nantucket. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no hands, we'll go to a vote. This is a non-binding request to the Board of Health to explore regulations. A yes vote will adopt that motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Okay. Article 62. Article 62 appears on page 71 of the warrant. The Finance Committee motion is moved not to adopt the article. The Finance Committee comment, based on legal advice from town council, the article is not specific enough to be valid for a charter amendment. I do have a motion from the proponent on Article 62, which is as follows. Move that Article 62 be referred to the Town Government Study Committee for a report and recommendation on a charter amendment to fulfill the purpose and intent of this petition. Looking for Ms. Teresa Williams? Oh, yeah. Okay, Ms. Williams, please stand up and get a microphone. Is that your motion? Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. As soon as you get a microphone from Mr. Stover.
Hello?
That's it.
My name's Teresa Williams. I live at 61 Pulpus Road. I want to put this out. I've been in a legal battle with the town of Nantucket since 2013. I acted in good faith. I got legal counsel. I followed all the rules. And after spending an enormous amount of money, I came to a settlement agreement with the town. And then it wasn't honored. I've gone to the different boards in Nantucket. It seems that nobody's responsible or in charge of anybody. I'm kind of at a standstill now. It's been five years. My agreement's never been met. I've had, obtained second legal counsel, but then I ran out of money. So I'd like to establish a council that would be made up of residents and taxpayers of the Nantucket. The intent of the board would be to resolve issues for individuals not represented by protective bargaining. It would establish a means for both individuals and businesses to avoid a lengthy and expensive process in court for both the town and the individual, business owner, or citizen. This board would be given the rights and privileges set forth in the town charter established for the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager. They would have the power to settle disputes, implement judgments, and return plaintiffs to whole if determined so by the board. I'm hoping that the government study group will recommend this for the next town meeting, and then we could pass something to help out people who are in a dispute with the town. And if you are, you know that it's an uphill battle, and it seems to go nowhere while you spend and, and battle. And they have more money than most of us. So we either lose, or we just don't go forward with our agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion. Okay, so this is a referral to the Town Government Study Committee. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Okay, Article 63 and 64. Mr. Saperstein, take it away.
Hello again, Lee Saperstein. On Article 63, the recommendation from the Finance Committee was not to adopt. And the proponent, the petitioner, has called the article and given us a substitute motion, which is on the screen. And because of the significance of it... And because of the significance of it, if you'll allow me, I should like to read it. Mr. Renemo has moved to discontinue current development plans for Six Fairgrounds Road, also known as the Tacoma Green Project. To the fullest extent possible under the law, the town of Nantucket shall discontinue the current plans to develop Six Fairgrounds Road. This article is not a revocation of any vested rights, yet it shall be interpreted as binding to the fullest extent allowable by law. Any and all, thank you, any and all legal means to stop the Tacoma Green Project available to any and all town government entity shall be employed in good faith. The town of Nantucket shall disentangle itself to the greatest extent allowable by law from existing contracts and agreements with Halkin Management Incorporated regarding the development of this project. Any planning for future development and usage of Six Fairgrounds Road, as well as 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, and 16 Tacoma Way, shall be done after the completion of the major mid-island developments currently underway, when their burden on traffic, parking, and other infrastructure can be adequately assessed. And then finally, this article shall be severable in regard to legality. If one or more sections are found unenforceable or illegal, any and all other sections shall remain enforceable to the fullest extent of the law. Mr. Renemo, is that your motion? And do you have a second? Excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Five minutes.
Thank you. First, just to address whether or not we're wasting our time here. I would second, you know, a lot of what Ms. Myers had to say is that it's not easy to submit these. To meet with town council, you have to do it in October. And a lot of the meetings for this have happened in between now and then. So you're trying your best and it's difficult then to have the town say, well, this is illegal, it doesn't matter. And I'm not sure that I believe them. There's still a lot of hurdles this project needs to pass. It doesn't have HDC approval yet. And I'm not suggesting that this will mandate the HDC do anything in particular, but it certainly sends a strong message. So I don't think we're wasting anybody's time here with this. And I think it's necessary because the approval for this has come over a long period of time. When this property was purchased, there was a footnote after the police station, after the fire station, that said affordable housing. And then later, there was a zoning change when I think most people in town envisioned this property being used for town employee housing. And now they're proposing to let Halkin, an off-island for-profit corporation, build a 62-unit apartment building. They're also proposing to lease the two of them for a dollar a year for 99 years. Money, property that, like I said, is worth millions of dollars, that us as taxpayers paid for, now we're giving it away. The project proposes to waive a significant portion of their parking. That will be done on public roads or not at all, or on the side of other public roads. I'm not sure where they intend to park. The timing on this, while maybe it was started with good intentions at a reasonable time, now we're looking at Richmond. It's not yet completed, it's not done. There's apartment buildings there. We don't know what the effect of those is going to be. Satrum's path is still under construction. We don't know what the effect of infrastructure, traffic, congestion, we don't know what that effect is going to be. And yet, the town wants to use a lot of taxpayer dollars, taxpayer land, to put another high-density apartment complex right in between those two, which to me, doesn't make any sense at all. What we heard at some of the meetings when we, as concerned citizens, went was that, oh, we're not building, we're not building these for people off-island, we're building these for people who already lived here, who already live here. And I just think that that is a naive approach. I think we all know that if you build 62 apartments, shortly thereafter, Nantucket's population is going up by 120 or so. And at this meeting, we've already talked about so many problems, at the root of which is our rapidly expanding population and rapidly increasing density. And this, a large-scale apartment building, if it doesn't fit in with Nantucket at all, is just pouring gas on that fire. So I would also mention, and we've heard time and again that this has been approved, this has already been approved, this is a done deal. And whether that's the case or not, this is your chance to sort of clearly state, not a zoning change that you thought was going to be for town housing, or a footnote on the end of land we bought to build a fire station and a police station. This is your chance to say whether you're in love with large-scale apartment buildings or not. And then I think with the language of this article and moving forward, it would be the height of recklessness for the town to try to continue building this, building this apartment complex. Now, I know that affordable housing is a concern, and I don't think we should stop talking about it, and I don't think we should stop trying to address it. But we need to address it in a way that's a lot more creative and a lot more in tradition with Nantucket than bulldozing more trees to build apartment buildings. And that is, I'll end on that. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Because of the comments about legality and impact on the board, I have suggested, or we have agreed, that town council would address the legal issues and the chair of the select board would address the impact on the board. Two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. Since I first reviewed this article after it was submitted by petition, I informed the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen that, in my opinion, the article is not in proper legal form. So we're here at town meeting, and town meeting has certain authority to act. Town meeting can authorize the disposition of town land, which you have done with respect to this property in a prior vote. Town meeting can enact bylaws, which this body did in enacting the zoning bylaw that allowed the development of this property. And town meeting can appropriate funds for particular projects. What town meeting doesn't have the authority to do is to interfere with the executive authority that is exercised by the Board of Selectmen with respect to the development of town property once town meeting has authorized the selectmen to act. So the town issued a request for proposals. That was a legal document. There were, I believe, four responses. Those proposals were evaluated, and the Board of Selectmen, based on that evaluation, voted to award the lease to Halkin Management. Thereafter, a land development agreement and a lease were negotiated, discussed at public sessions, and the Board of Selectmen voted and in fact did sign the land development agreement. Once that occurred, legal rights vested in both the town and in the developer, which simply, town meeting doesn't have the authority to undo. So my recommendation on this article is, should you vote to approve this, I think you are going to be creating a great deal of legal uncertainty and potential liability to the town because there currently exists valid and enforceable contracts with respect to the development of this property.
Thank you. Select Board?
I'm going to defer to our Affordable Housing Trust Fund representative.
Thank you. Member of the Select Board, Rita Higgins.
Sorry, can I get a little more? Is there any more?
Who's having trouble getting the cord extended? There we go.
I would really, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Renemo's concerns, and I also want to acknowledge that Mr. Cabral earlier during Article 10 talked about affordable housing and the vision of cottages in the woods, which I love. And while I would like to keep that as a vision for future projects, since 2004, when we first acquired this land, we have been unable to adequately address our affordable housing needs. And while this project is a far cry from cottages in the woods, I do support it and the opportunity that provides us to tackle affordable housing head-on. I understand and share the concerns about development, density, traffic, and infrastructure. I absolutely understand and share the concerns and shock of clearing more land. I also understand, as a renter who qualifies for affordable housing, the need for affordable housing and the impact, the destabilizing impact of not having affordable options, diverse affordable options has on the community. So with those concerns in mind, all of them together, looking at this project, this project does address larger environmental, bigger-picture environmental issues. It has baked into the design energy efficiency, stormwater management, green space. I want to see more designs like that, projects like that on Nantucket. And while I do want to work towards smaller, greener projects, learning from this one, better projects, the reason we have a project like this with 80% affordable housing, affordable units, which is a big deal, is because the community has supported it. And I would like to ask for the community to continue to support these projects.
Thank you. Now, I've also had requests to address the group from the town's housing consultant and also from representatives of the companies involved in building this project, Tacoma Green. I will recognize them if they raise their hands, and we'll try and do a rotation around the room, and I will, with deference to the people whom I missed on that side, I will keep scanning that way as well. So Housing Consultant, Tucker Holland.
Hello. Tucker Holland, Housing Specialist for the town. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all tonight. I, you know, I'm kind of reflecting on how Reverend Smolt started the meeting tonight and noting that, you know, we're all here to do things for the common good and that housing is far from stable. I don't think there's anyone in this room who really would deny that we have a housing crisis for our year-round workforce community. I might address just a couple of points through Mr. Moderator that were made earlier by the proponent of this article. It's a bit incorrect with regard to the HDC. The HDC did vote to approve all four of the buildings for this project at their meeting last Thursday. And I personally want to applaud that process. It went exactly as the Board of Selectmen, I think, intended and that you all intended when you unanimously gave them the authority to move forward with this project back in 2015, I believe it was. And yes, this is a for-profit developer. We also had a similar proposal with a similar financing stack and similar profit associated with it from a nonprofit developer. And this ended up being the proposal that overwhelmingly was recommended by the review committee and then unanimously approved by the Board of Selectmen. This is, I think the town has previously determined that this is an excellent location for this type of project, and the density, in fact, here in an appropriate location, will help to conserve more green and open space in the areas where we really expect most to see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, hands, if there's anybody else that would like to speak. And I will also recognize our, my apologies, I'll recognize our guests as soon as, would you like to speak? And are you Marquesse of Halkin or George Connolly of Williams Building? It might be best if you just grab a microphone from the table in front of you.
Thank you. I actually, I hadn't really--
And which of the two are you?
I'm Marquesse from Halkin.
Right, thank you, Marques.
My apologies. I hadn't, I hadn't really intended to, to speak, but I would like to say, take this opportunity to say a few things.
Just to hold the microphone. Yeah, you're right up there like you're bellowing out a rock song. There you go.
All right. We are, we're Affordable Housing Property Management and Development Company, based in Massachusetts. And we didn't come to Nantucket to tell Nantucket what they needed or what they should do. We responded to what we thought was a really thoughtful plan and RFP that really clearly articulated what the priorities and goals of Nantucket were that was issued by the Board of Selectmen. And we put a lot of effort in trying to creatively consider what the needs are specifically for Nantucket in a rental community and marry those priorities, addressing the needs for families of different sizes and the fact that, you know, families start maybe at one income level and they, their situation hopefully improves over time, and you have kids and you, you no longer fit in a one-bedroom and now you need a three-bedroom, you're no longer one-income family, you're a two-income family. And being able to address that kind of growth and a long-term, stable housing environment for families in a single community. And it's a tough, it was a tough challenge at 64 units. It is three acres. It's a pretty tight site. But we believed that, we wouldn't be here if we, we didn't believe in what the vision was. I mean, we're, we're very pleased with where the developments come. We've, most of you that have been paying attention to the Tacoma Green effort that have come to the meetings, understand that we've been present and we've been listening, and the project has evolved, and as painful it is, it has improved over time. We're long, I've been with the company for 20 years. I think we've sold three properties or four properties in my 20-year tenure. We're, we're here to stay. We manage Academy Hill, and, and we're just trying to accommodate the town's vision as best we can.
Thank you. And now, any additional hands? And Mr. Connolly, I'll recognize you if you raise your hand. Okay, thank you. I see no other hands. We've, we've got one here. You know, and there I am, missing, having promised I'd look left. Just keep talking and, and you'll have to repeat.
Hello? There we go. Oh, gosh, it comes on loud. Again, Brooke Moore. I live at 2 Henderson Drive, member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I want to talk about the 64 families who will have a stable roof over their heads that may not have one now. And I want to tell a story. I work at Nantucket Looms, and our store manager lost her year-round housing two weeks ago. And it has thrown her life into an incredible turmoil. She's a mom of a little girl, and she's just one of hundreds of people. Since I joined the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and I talk about this around Nantucket, I hear story after story after story of people suffering stress, anxiety, financial threats. This project is the intersection of our funding as a community to help our neighbors to have a stable roof over their head, to raise their families, to stay here the long term, to be able to save money for a down payment and have a prayer at ever having homeownership opportunities. And for that, there is absolutely no reason for us to back out of this and actually spend money to do nothing, is what will happen, because we have legally binding contracts here. It will cost us to do nothing. And I really beg-- contracts here. It will cost us to do nothing. And I really beg you, do not allow that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, well, Mr. Greeter, you have, Mr. Borchardt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Carl Borchardt, 14 Burn Swamp Lane. I just had a few points to make very quickly here. I'm on the planning board as an alternate. And for the record, I did not vote on this project. It was unanimously passed by the five sitting members of the board. I did not vote on this. I was not activated. So I'm more speaking of a private citizen who is very concerned about affordable housing. And I would echo this lady who just spoke. I know a person who's a clerk downtown at a store. And she's been battling housing all spring. And she's only got till May 16th. And she has to find another arrangement. And it's very sad. As far as the 99-year lease for a dollar, I'd like to point out that Sherburne Commons has the same, I believe, has the same arrangement. It's not unheard of. And I'd also like to point out that I'm disappointed with the opposition on this. The appeal is costing the taxpayers money. And the mention of the road, Wade Strive, being a driveway to this is not true. And that's taxpayer-funded. But the appeal is costing the taxpayers money. And I would like to say, a public thank you to the officials who have worked so hard on this, the Select Board, Madam Chair Holgate, member Mr. Kelly, and the rest of the board, the Planning Board for having the vision to approve this, the Planning Office, Mr. Vorse, Ms. Snell and staff, Mr. Holland, the town of Nantucket itself for having the vision to do this, the Town Manager, Ms. Gibson, and staff. This is the right project in the right place at the right time. I would urge you to please vote down these two articles. Let's build this project and give 64 families, like was said, a place to live. And are we all going to say no to this? No, we shouldn't say no. We should say yes. Where are people supposed to live?
Thank you. I'm looking around the house. A technical term for Parliament is the House, like the Houses of Parliament. And, well, we see one more hand over here. Now, microphone, please.
Town meeting, we can't vote.
Please use the microphone. And it's not that we can't project our voices, but it gets recorded as it goes.
Okay, I understand, sir. What I don't understand is the recommendation here says that we cannot, as a town meeting, we don't have the authority to do this. I understand discussing it, but in the end, I don't see how we can vote for or against this when we don't have the authority to. So are we going to vote just to say we have an opinion that this shouldn't have been done or that this should be done? I mean, I'm not quite sure where this is going with a vote, because it states in our recommendation here that we can't do that.
You have a valid question. And the response, to the best of my knowledge, is that town meeting likes, town meeting has the ability to express itself. And so by voting one way or the other, we're making an expression. And then, having made that expression, it has to be dealt with by the people sitting in front of me. All right? We've got another hand?
I'm Dylan Flyshute. I live at 13A Amelia Drive, like literally right behind the police station. I can cut through a hedge and I'm in full construction zone. I don't really care one way or the other. I film all the meetings and it's not this big, ugly apartment building. Like, they actually did a pretty good job. I don't know, just throwing it out there. People need places to live and we're kind of already way too far into this one. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. And there's a hand way in the back. Yeah, I can see you, Mr. Teller.
Thanks. Doug Smith. I'm one of the lucky people here. I live at number seven Nyana Street, or Drive. I want a house at Satch's Path. I've been a renter for 47 years on Nantucket and I almost had to leave in 12 months because I couldn't find a place to live. I'm speaking in favor of the affordable housing. And I'm sorry, Matt, because I agree with you that we have a problem with traffic, we have a problem with population, but we have to have somewhere to live. If someone in your family was having to move off island because they couldn't find a place, your opinion might be different. But I'll leave it at that. I'm just asking for approval of this article. Thank you.
I didn't understand you, because to vote yes would be to move this action.
I'm for the true article. And I apologize to Matt Renimo because I'm against this amendment.
It's not an amendment. This is the main motion.
Sorry, I thought you were going to-
All right. Okay, we've got somebody else in the back.
Hi, Zona Butler for Bailey Road. As I understand it, this is a meeting to hear different sides. And I want to say, number one, I support affordable housing. I support housing. Couple of concerns, and I'm probably going to say some things that people are thinking but don't want to say for various reasons. And Mr. Renimo has given his opinion about this huge apartment complex. I've heard others say there's going to be four units over three acres and that sort of thing. I just, when I look up there, I see Tacoma Green Projects. Now, I'm saying that because I think that's what a lot of people are thinking. And you may be in a deal that we can't get out of and that sort of thing. But I like in the future to think about providing housing in units. I'm assuming maybe 15 units per building? Is that what we're talking? Is there a picture?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Do you have a picture of the plan?
Do we have a picture or a plan?
Yeah. And then-
I don't think so.
The idea would be to spread it out, not have so much in one area. Who wants to look out their front door and look at 64 units every morning? So that's something to think about when you're coming up with housing. Yes, we need housing. Yes, we need affordable housing. But you really should think about how many you're putting in one area, you know, density.
Thank you. Thank you. I hear you. And we will have a vote on calling the question if, unless people agree, we can vote right now. Would you accept that? All right. If you vote yes, you're asking that the substitute motion be approved. If you vote no, you turn it down. So all those in favor, please say aye. I was trying to get things moving faster. The gentleman who called the question said if you voted, he was okay. But counsel says, he called the question, that's what we're going to do. Calling the question, you vote aye and we stop debate and go to the main motion. You vote no, we go back to debate. Calling the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And all those opposed, no or nay. Main motion. A vote of aye or yes will approve the motion that's on the screen. A vote of no or nay will turn it down. All those in favor, please say aye. And those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. That is turned down. That is not approved. We now have Article 64. And I'm going to ask Mr. Renimo, are you still, Renimo, thank you. I did suggest, are you still willing to call this question?
Yeah, let's not stop now.
All right.
A little background on this article. The first one was specific. And when we brought our concerns as a neighborhood before the public boards, the perception among them, which in light of the recent votes may be more true than I thought, was that this was a neighborhood problem, that people were concerned about this because we have to live down the street from it. The 62 units are getting put up, not in my backyard, but pretty close. And that was the resistance I got. The people on the board said, well, Matt, you know, we understand, but it's your backyard, so that's why you don't like it. And that couldn't be further from the truth. I don't want this in my backyard, but I don't want it in any of your backyards. I don't want the town getting into the housing business. I don't want extra people moving here that aren't already here. Our problems are caused by too many people, no matter where they live, whether they're in my backyard or yours. So your votes are pretty clear in that you want this apartment complex in my backyard, but maybe you'll try to save your own on this one. Thank you. One more thing. For as long as I've been coming to these, for as long as I've been alive, the question at these meetings that's been raised over and over again is, how are my kids going to afford to live here? My kids aren't going to be able to afford to live here. Let's make it so my kids can live here. And that's a good question. And like I said, we should address that question. But the one that we're going to have to start thinking about is, are our kids going to want to live here if we keep doing stuff like this?
My apologies to those of you at Town Meeting. The normal procedure would be to read the motion. I was aware that it is identical to the one printed in your warrant. And so I should have asked for your indulgence in not reading it because it's been available to you. But please understand that Mr. Renimo's positive motion repeats, Matt, would you help me out?
Renimo.
Renimo. All right. We'll get there. That the motion has been available for you to read since this was printed and distributed. And so with that, may I ask Town Counsel if he has a response?
Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Meeting. Again, when I reviewed this article, I indicated that it was, at best, a non-binding vote. Because Town Meeting, it purports to limit the ability of the town in the future to dispose of land for affordable housing purposes or to appropriate money for a seven-year period. And without an actual bylaw, this body does not have the authority to bind, let me put it this way, the people in the room here tonight do not have the authority to bind a future town meeting if, for example, a year from now, an affordable housing project were to surface in a warrant article. The vote tonight, placing a moratorium on those projects in and of itself, would not be binding on a future town meeting. The more I looked at this article, though, it seems to suggest a legal moratorium be imposed. And in my opinion, the only possible way that Town Meeting could do that would be to enact a zoning bylaw. There are circumstances where Town Meeting can enact a zoning bylaw, placing a moratorium on certain types of development. But clearly, this article was not proposed as a zoning amendment. It did not go through the rigorous public hearing requirements for a zoning bylaw amendment. So you can't vote that tonight. I would also suggest that even if it had been proposed as a zoning bylaw amendment, I very much doubt that the Attorney General would approve such a bylaw because I don't think it would be found to advance a legitimate planning concern. And it would treat various properties in town different than other properties. So at best, this is a non-binding vote. It is not binding on the decisions of future town meetings should other projects for affordable housing come before you.
Thank you. And now I'm looking for hands. We've got one. Mr. Stover, or Teller Stover will take a microphone up to, I hear you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen has called the question.
Yeah, it's our third time on the same thing.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, non-debatable, needs a two-thirds vote. In favor, we cut off debate and go to the main motion for a vote. If the nays have it, then we go back to debate. All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Thank you. Main motion, the article is before you. As I mentioned earlier, there's just a word or two changed at the preface or the very first sentence to make it into a positive motion. All those in favor, please say aye. And opposed, nay.
Nay.
Thank you. And now it's Madam Moderator.
Thank you so much, Mistress Saperstein. So I think, yes, that did not pass. Thank you. So, given that it is 1012, I would like to just ask where we are with Article 66. Mr. Burns, were you able to resolve anything? Positive or negative? She doesn't want to go forward? Okay. Does anyone want to go forward on Article 66? Okay, so let's just take a vote on Article 66. Article 66 is on page 73 of the warrant. It has a positive recommendation motion from the Finance Committee. I'd ask for your consent to waive the reading of that motion. Recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making it. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. We're not going to have any debate. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Okay. Let's do one more and then we can start tomorrow night. We'll be, you don't want to do one more? All right. Well, I'm going to do one more and then we'll talk. You guys can all work it out amongst yourselves. Article 67. Article 67 is on page 74 of the warrant. It had a motion to take no action. There was a Board of Selectmen comment. They were, the Board of Selectmen at the time, they support the name change and plan to pursue this name change within the confines of the Board of Selectmen authority. They have since taken a vote and have adopted the name Select Board. The proponent, Ms. Murphy, has a motion, which I guess I will tell you is essentially what's written in the warrant, except that it starts out, moved that the town's representatives and the general court are hereby requested to introduce legislation seeking a special act so as to amend the charter for the town of Nantucket, Chapter 289 of the Acts of 1996, as set forth below. And that the general court, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, make constructive changes in the text hereof as may be necessary or advisable to accomplish the intent of the proposed legislation in order to secure its passage and to take any other action as may be relative thereto as follows. And then this following paragraph is exactly what's printed in the warrant. So I would ask that you spare me the reading of that entire paragraph. Is that your motion, Ms. Murphy? Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded, Ms. Murphy.
Okay. Thank you very much. Article 67 will change the name of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board and the title of Selectmen to Member. It is proposed and sponsored by We Can, Women Engaged in Civic Action on Nantucket. Officially making this change is a three-step process. Last week, the Board voted unanimously to adopt a policy change to take actions to informally change the name. This article sends a home rule petition to the state, asking our representatives to officially change the name in state law and the town charter. Then, we would locally update the county charter- Then we would locally update the county charter and town bylaw to match. The Board of Selectmen was named when it was literally men who were selected by other men to govern before women could vote or own property, never mind serve on a board. The time has come to update the name, to reflect our community and our values, and to send the message that the Board and our town government is accessible and inclusive of all members of our community. Language matters. Fortunately, it has never been so easy to show respect for 50% of our population, just like over 40 other towns in Massachusetts have done. Much of the work is done at the state level, and our state rep and senator have agreed to help with this work needed for this if we pass this at Town Meeting. For the most part, it is a search-and-replace exercise, as we so generously saw earlier this evening on the screen, in the law and regulations. And the sponsors, Jennifer Cohen and I, are more than willing to help in any way possible. The process allows time for this to be done efficiently without burden on the town. This change would be prospective and would not make any retroactive changes. We make a lot of tough decisions at annual Town Meeting, but we believe this one is quite easy. Please join us in supporting Article 67 tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Worth, did the Finance Committee want to make a comment?
Yes.
We should call this. It's about time. If you would bear with me. Since the publication of the Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 67 to take no action, the Finance Committee has had an opportunity to meet with the representatives of the petitioners to discuss the proposed charter amendment, to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. In addition, since the publication of our recommendation, the Board of Selectmen has voted to adopt, as you heard this evening, a name change policy. Accordingly, at our meeting on March 28, 2018, the Finance Committee voted unanimously to support Article 67 because the Finance Committee believes that Article 67 promotes an important town policy of gender neutrality and inclusiveness. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anything further? Oh, yes. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. Grant Sanders, 14 Dennis Drive. I'm really happy to rise to support this. It's a long time coming. I get very emotional about stuff like this. 52% of the population are women. We need more women down front here. I'm working on a big project right now for the Girl Scouts. And the line we wrote for the Girl Scouts was, "Girls will save the world." And the reason we came to that conclusion was because men have had a chance to do it, and they haven't done it quite yet. We need more women to be encouraged to serve. We need to make it easier for them to serve. And we need to send a message to everyone in the town that that's important. So please support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can go to a vote. Oh, wait a minute. I'm going to go to Mrs. Topham, then we're going to go to a vote.
Hold the light.
Uh-oh. This is serious.
I want to express, respectfully express, my disappointment with the Board of Selectmen and the proponents of this article. I do understand that the state is planning on making the change, but I don't think we need to join them. Nantucket has been unique for years, and I think we should continue. This year, we have many more important issues to be thinking about and discussing. We have our children and families to worry about. And then we must consider our sewer, the possibility of losing our electricity and cable again for a longer period, flooding in many areas, our infrastructure, our policemen, our firemen. Over the years, we have had many strong women who served our community with pride and dedication. Nancy Severance and Esther Gibbs come to mind. I can hear Esther saying, "What are they thinking?" However, she would have been a little bit more expressive than that. I have a statement from Nancy Severance. With your permission, Madam Moderator, I will read it. Dated 4/3/18, from Nancy Severance. I don't know what busybody dreamed up this article, but I am grateful to learn that it did not originally come from our present Board of Selectmen. As you know, I served as a Selectman for nine years, and I am outraged at this proposed change solely in the name of political correctness. Nantucket has had a select men or man for over 300 years, and is a wonderful tradition that should be preserved. I would like to point out that this is a title and not a physical description. For many years, almost 50 years, I have served on many local boards. I have been a chairman on them, and I never felt that I was being treated any differently because I was a woman than a man. I think we have strong women, and I don't think we necessarily need to do this and join the state. I respectfully request that you defeat this article. Thank you for your consideration.
So I think we can go right to a vote. Oh, point of order, yes? Yes.
Genevieve Harmon. Could you, now that the recommendation has changed, how does that change the vote?
It doesn't. Let me explain that. So first of all, someone's moved the question, but I think once I make this explanation, we can just go to a vote on the main motion on Article 67. What you'll be voting on is the motion made by Ms. Murphy that's printed on the screen. The Finance Committee is supporting Ms. Murphy's motion. They haven't actually voted to change their own motion, which I think is because they have a policy. They don't change their... They're trying not to change their motions within two weeks of the meeting so we avoid having so many read-in technical amendments prior to the meeting. So they're supporting the motion. It doesn't change what you're voting on. You're voting on Ms. Murphy's motion as printed on the screen. This requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
That motion is adopted. Okay. So I understand people would like to continue on. I have a number of articles that have been called by Mr. Barrett, starting with Article Article 72 starts on page 99, continues to page 100, where the Finance Committee motion starts, continues on to page 101. It is a long motion, so I'd ask for your unanimous consent to waive the reading. I will note that there was one change read in at the beginning of the meeting, down on number 82, formerly 17, lot 222. Yes?
I don't see...
Yes.
I don't think...
Let's ask. Do people want to do a couple more articles, or do you want to go home?
(Laughter).
Okay. Here, I'm going to... I'll tell you what. Let's see how many people leave. Where can...
(Laughter).
Okay. Then stay, because we're going to do one, maybe two, because when we come back to... I'm not going to finish tonight. There's not a chance. Because there are... 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 articles. Oh, but Mr. Barrett is telling me his comments are all the same. So what I would like to do is hear what Mr. Barrett has to say on Article 72, and then we can decide where we're going. How about that? Okay. I should have really been a little more clear about that. I'm not going to get a sense in the meeting. I'm going to do 72, and we're going to see how we... We're going to see what happens, because we may feel very different at the end of 72. Okay. So we're going to waive the reading. We're going to note that lot 222 has been changed to 223. I'm going to recognize Mr. Worth for the purposes of making the Finance Committee's motion as printed in the warrant with that one correction. Is there a second? That motion is made and seconded, and I am going to go to Mr. Barrett for his comment. Yeah, put the map up. Which map would you like? There are four.
Sorry. 76 Washington Street, Francis Street. The next map down, I believe, too.
The Washington Street map? Okay. Try the next one.
That one? Okay.
Okay.
I believe this is being transferred over to Land Bank. That's Francis Street Beach, right there. That's a... There's a concession stand on that beach, but I believe it's a kayak rental place. That's money income coming into the town, and we're going to be transferring it to the Land Bank. Is that correct? That is a money-producing property for the town because there's a concession in there for a kayak, and we're transferring that to Land Bank. Are we keeping the income on that?
Okay. Mr. Vorse?
Moderator. The intent here is to transfer the management of the properties to the Land Bank. And here, this particular stretch of waterfront, the idea is that the Land Bank would be able to manage this. Management fees go with whoever's doing the management, and in this case, the Land Bank does an excellent job with management. It's something I think that would go with them.
If you can go to the next map in regard... I'd like to... Nope, next one, please. I'd like to add an amendment. Nope, next one, please. That one. That is actually out in... Out behind the farm. And these articles, they're kind of combined. There's 72, 79. They're all mismatched. But my concern is, is that Land Bank's going to take over this property. There's some roads that go through there, and there's parking for the beaches. And it's my experience with Land Bank. When they take over properties, they can find the space of parking for beachheads. They close trails off, and they close roads off. I'd like to add an amendment to the article that says on the article before Section 2 that has a wording to include no restrictions of pathways or roadways or trails and parking.
Okay. So you're asking to add, right before Section 2, a new paragraph. We're going to type this up, and then we're going to see if it works.
It'll be right in reservation of restrictions and easements.
Okay.
And to include no restrictions...
Okay.
...of alterations of roadways, paths, or trails.
Okay. Wait, wait, wait. All right, slow down. So after Town Clerk, we're going to put a comma. And now say it really slowly.
Actually, Madam Moderator, be up above where it says reservations or restrictions...
All right. You want to put it after the easements?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. See where the easement says commas? Comma? There. Okay, let's type in there.
And include no restrictions or...
And includes...
And include no restrictions...
And includes no restrictions...
Or alterations...
Or alterations.
Of roads, paths, or trails and parking.
Of roads, trails, trails. Trails? What happened to trails? Comma, and parking. Or parking.
Or parking. And...
Comma.
Of existing, alterations of existing.
Of existing. Put... Alterations of existing.
And then, because things change, at the end of the word parking, we can stick in there without approval of Town Meeting. And that way, if Land Bank wants to come and change something and close a road off...
Okay.
Or change the parking, they can come to ask us to do it, because if they do it in one of their meetings on a Tuesday, no one here in this room's going to be there.
Okay. Is that... So that's your motion, that amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. On the amendment only. Any... Yes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would respectfully say that Land Bank does an excellent job creating beach access and encouraging people to use our land. And we rarely ever close roads off. And if we do so, it's for a very good reason. And these are... You're more than welcome to come on a Tuesday, every second Tuesday, and discuss any concerns you have. But I think we've got a sterling record of maintaining public access for everybody. And I am not going to vote for this, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. So on the amendment. Okay. This requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. It's just on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
That is not adopted. Okay. So on the main motion now, on Article 72, as printed in the warrant with the correction of lot 222 to 223, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. So Mr. Barrett, is it your intention on all of these to do a similar thing? Is that what's happening?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes and no. The next one, that I had a question in regard to the... One second, Madam Moderator. We're on...
73.
73.
On page 100 to 103. The motion's on 103.
May I get that map up there, please?
Okay. I'm going to ask for the Finance Committee's motion. It is as printed in the warrant, ask that you waive the reading. Recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making that motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. All right. So...
That green section is a conveyance. I'm trying to figure out exactly where it's being conveyed to. I was told it's swamp land and that the management is to be handed off to NIR for management of the wetland. And I just wanted clarification that the other parcels are going to stay unaltered by Land Bank.
Okay. Mr. Vorse? This is going from county to town, right?
Yes. It's going from county to town. The non-green parcels are staying with the town. The green parcel is a wetland, and it's half and half owned by the adjoining property owners. They... If it is ever conveyed, it would be conveyed with a permanent preservation restriction. They have approval from the Conservation Commission to manage that wetland, remove invasive species, but the property line goes through the middle of it. So again, this is an authority article. It authorizes the Board of Selectmen to act. I've worked with the Board of Selectmen on a lot of these. I really trust them to put the restrictions in place. So I'd ask you to support it.
Anything further on Article 73? This requires a majority voice vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Okay. Okay. So Article 76, which is on page 107... That's all on 107. Finance Committee motion is as printed in the warrant. I'd ask for your consent to waive the reading. Recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making the Finance Committee's motion. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Mr. Barrada?
Moderator, I'd like to rescind these articles of 76, 78, and 79, and put them back into the pot for voting.
Okay, 76...
And move to 81.
All right. So, 76... 77 is Ms. Longacre. You want to go forward, correct? Okay, so 76, 78, and 79. Mr. Barrada?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So does anyone want to discuss 76, 78, and 79? Excellent. So, we will vote those in accordance with their motions. Those motions are as printed in the warrant without any changes whatsoever. A yes vote will adopt those motions of the Finance Committee in accordance with their printed recommendation, and no vote will defeat them. But first, I'm going to recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making a motion to adopt Articles 76, 78, and 79 in accordance with their printed recommendation as set forth in the warrant. What? Oh, it requires a two-thirds vote. Okay. Is that motion made, Mr. Worth? And seconded? Okay. Motion made and seconded. So it does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt those three articles. A no vote will defeat them. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. Okay, those are adopted unanimously. So Article 77. Page 108 of the warrant. Finance Committee motion is as printed in the warrant. Recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making the motion, asking that you waive the reading. Thank you, Mr. Worth. Thank you. Ms. Longacre?
This is Mary Longacre. I have an amendment to propose for this.
Okay.
And that is simply that we strike the paragraph, as you've indicated there on the screen.
Okay, so we're deleting the property... Your amendment is to delete the property, a portion of map 55, parcel 137, 10 Surfside Road.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Ms. Longacre?
Yes, the purpose of the article is stated is for Old South Road improvements. This parcel is the corner of Sparks Avenue and Surfside Road. They've notably just down the street here. And in my conversations with the Transportation Planning Department, this is being proposed for future use and roadway improvements there. The... There is no specific plan at this point. There are several proposals. There is one that is favored, but none that have been adopted. And so what I've been told is that removing this parcel will not cause a delay in the planning process for this, because they simply aren't far enough along in the planning process to have selected exactly what's gonna happen at this intersection. The reason that I want to remove it is because of the tree that is near the intersection. If we can put the map on the screen, please?
Okay.
The map, if you look in the top-left corner, you see a red triangle. Maybe we can zoom in on it? The map is shown here, takes a good chunk of that corner. The tree is located approximately at the lower-left piece of that red triangle. And my concern is that what you're doing there is you're cutting the root zone of that tree and putting it on two different parcels, one controlled by the school, one controlled by the town. Now, the Transportation Planners and other people have assured me that that tree is a priority. It is a very high priority to me, as a former member of the Tree Advisory Committee, as somebody who lives on Vesper Lane and goes through that intersection every day, and as a former member of the Nantucket Tree Fund who adopted that tree as part of their logo. That tree is very historically significant and iconic on the island. It would be just terrible and, to me, unthinkable to do work that would damage the tree. And since it seems to me to be no pressing need to transfer this parcel, I would like to have the parcel removed from the article. I want to further point out that the favored roadway improvements don't require a piece of land of this size. What I was shown by the Transportation Planners is a teeny-tiny piece of the sidewalk at the corner, not the entire corner that's shown here on this map. And then further, there is no survey, there is no definition of exactly what piece of land they want to take. There's just this red triangle on the map that doesn't correspond to any specific plan that's been adopted. So I'm asking that we remove this, so that we can have a better plan, something that is more specific regarding preserving the health of the tree, and something that is specific to whatever transportation improvements eventually are designed for this intersection.
Thank you. Okay, on the amendment. Ms. Ray?
I think it will come as no surprise that I, too, would love to go and hug this tree. It's been a symbol of that intersection for generations. And I agree with the previous speaker that let's not just do this to do it, let's have a plan, and let's find out what... How it will affect that particular tree. It's a beautiful elm, and I'm sure everyone that has attended the school or driven past it, which is probably everybody in this room, has seen that tree. And it's fabulous, and let's not do this just to do it. Let's wait until there's a plan in hand. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't think I announced myself when I talked earlier for Article, whatever it was, 15. Mike Burns, Transportation Planner. So hello to the few of you who are still here. I'm worn out, just like the rest of you. We do want to fix this intersection. When I met with Mary, I showed her the plan that we had. It specifically does not touch the tree. In fact, what's protecting the tree is a utility cabinet that's closer to the intersection. That's probably even harder to move, or relocate, or do anything with. So all of that's being avoided here. I would ask you to defeat the amendment if you ever want to see this intersection ever improved, and let's just move forward with this. We don't want to come to a next Town Meeting sometime in the future and ask for authorization to take what essentially is a sidewalk easement over the school property to fix this intersection. Just about the status of this project. Preliminary design for this intersection's already been approved. May 17th, there'll be public hearings to look at the conceptual plans that were shared with Mary. And what you voted for in Article 10, completed the design, well, completed the funding for to complete the design of that intersection. So this is well on its way to happening. We don't want to have to come back next year to, again, ask for permission to do a little bit of an impact to that tiny little corner of the property. So I would ask you to vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Okay. So on the amendment, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That is not adopted. Okay, so on Article 77, as printed, a yes vote will adopt the motion, a no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Okay. So 81 and 82 are kind of companion articles, and they're our last two articles, believe it or not. Oh, 80... Did someone say 83? No. 81 and 82. 81 is on page 112. Motion of the Finance Committee as is printed. I'd ask for your consent to waive the reading and recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making the Finance Committee motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Mr. Barrada? Yep. It's gonna come in any second.
Madam Moderator?
Yep.
May I please have the map up there of Lincoln Avenue? Okay. I brought this article for... Called this article in regard, because this is a parcel of property that's in contention that's gonna go into yard sale program. It's going to be sold to the abutters that are there. Lincoln Circle does not have much parking there for Steps Beach. We keep looking for more parking to find spaces. This right here is a lot of property that theoretically could be used for diagonal parking, so that we can park at Steps Beach for whatever use that we want to do, i.e. going to the beach, or what have you. If we put this in the yard sale program, it will be sold to the abutters or the people that are there, and we'll never have it. I suggest that we vote this down for now. Possibly the town could take the fence that's around Lincoln Circle, shrink the fence inside, bring it in about 15 feet. We can all diagonally park around Steps Beach. We would have ample parking, and then they could bring this back next year, and we would have... We'd be suffice of parking that, yes, maybe we could get rid of it then. But right now, if you go to Steps Beach in the summer, you can't park anywhere. There's not anywhere to be up there. So I ask that we don't vote for this, and let it go, and they can come back next year.
Thank you. On the article... Ms. Williams?
We're all sitting here trying to figure out who's gonna talk about this one. We're all too tired to get up. This is a private road, this section. It's from 1876, Andrew? 1874 plan. It has been encompassed by these three lots. It is not public parking. It is not public property. This part, that I believe we already took the northern part towards Lincoln... I mean, what is that, Indian Avenue? This has been part of their front yards. I grew up in number 10. They paid the taxes on it. And when you look at a normal survey, it includes their front yard. The road is where it is. It's not changing. They would just like to be able to get clear title to the entire lot. It's not a big brain surgery here. All this is doing is allowing the Selectmen to take their private road, that portion that's never been driven on, and then convey it back to them, so they can get complete title to what they've had. Those lots have been like that since they subdivided off of 10 to create 12 and create 14. Please vote in favor of this, both this one and the next one.
Thank you. Okay. Yes?
As a town public road on that property, does the town own... Have possession of half of the private road? So it's not half and half, like the paper streets? Okay.
Okay. So, this requires a majority voice vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Okay. I didn't think it was possible, but Article 82, our last article, motion is as printed in the warrant. Ask for your unanimous consent to waive the reading. Recognize Mr. Worth for the purpose of making the motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Mr. Barrada? Okay, we're just gonna go to a vote, then. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, that is adopted unanimously. So, thank you very much. I will recognize... Who do I recognize? I recognize Don Hill Holgate, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, for the purpose of making a final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Actually, motion to dissolve. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.